This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Good evening. This is a special town council meeting for the purposes of a public forum on the capital improvement program. We are allowed to have this meeting virtually based on Governor Baker's orders of March 12th, 12, 2020. Given that we have a quorum of the council, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And it is 6:32. And I'm going to make sure that people can hear us and we can hear you, although the purpose of this is to be able to hear from the public. So very quickly, I will go through the council. Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Shalony Baumellem, I'll come back for that. Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Darcy Devant.
Here.
Lynn Griesmer is present, Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Sarah Schwartz. And Shalony Baumellem.
I'm here.
Oh, thank you. So we're wait, well, Sarah may join us later. Based on this, we are going to start with a very brief presentation about the capital improvement program. And then we will be open for a public comment. The requirements of the charter are that there be as much public comment and dialogue as there are presentations. So Shalony, if you will begin.
Paul, do you want to say anything first, or do you want me just to hop right into this?
Hop right in. I think this is the shortest PowerPoint people will have ever seen.
Yeah, that's, that's probably true. So yes, so this is the forum on the capital improvement program. We're going to start with some highlights, or really it's sort of all highlights. So the first piece here is that the proposed capital improvement program spans five years. We worked really hard this year with the Joint Capital Planning Committee to make sure that the five years were balanced and that we didn't ignore things that couldn't be in the plan at the present time, that we had a mechanism for keeping track of those things. But it was really important to try to put together a balanced five-year plan going forward. The plan itself incorporates the plan for the four building projects. It incorporates a variety of assumptions around borrowing and debt, and it tries to incorporate all those things into the plan. So that when you look at the financing summary for the capital improvement program, it's really sort of an all-in look at general fund capital improvements. So we'll start with that the improvement program allocates eight and a half percent of the levy to cash capital. This is up from 5% the year before. And it's one of the steps on our plan to get up to 10% and possibly 10 and a half percent in the future in order to address the four building projects. As I mentioned before, it does incorporate the capital requirements. It says three of the four, because three of the four, we're proposing to use existing capital funds with the fourth, the schools. You'll see in the summary for the capital improvement program that we're proposing a debt exclusion for that project. It addresses deferred maintenance. We had quite a bit of backlog of projects from the prior year where we just funded the capital reserve. And so this helps make some headway on that. It maintains a significant investment in roads and sidewalks. I think when Paul and I looked at it, the last two or three years of funding for roads and sidewalks was greater than the previous, you know, at least five, six years. And we tried to evaluate all the projects through a lens of impact on climate change. We redesigned our forum to really focus on this. And I think we'll see an even greater focus on, on climate change and the impact of the capital projects going forward. Next slide, please. So some of the specific projects, there is a first time sort of specific project for sustainability improvements. A hundred thousand was added for FY22, and the plan was for this to keep going every year going forward. There are some ideas for what those funds would be used for, such as a study of sort of solar readiness of town buildings, converting some of our vehicle purchases to hybrid or all-electric. But we also wanted to leave it a little bit of flexibility there because we haven't seen the, the climate resiliency plan yet, which may have some capital implications going forward as well. We added 50,000 for accessibility improvements. And again, that's also intended to be a recurring item going forward. 350,000, which is the sum of the amount at each building for roof repairs at all three elementary schools. The bulk of that is at Crocker Farm to address a portion of the Crocker Farm roof, a specific part of it. And then there are additional amounts for the other two buildings to make sure those roofs stay strong going forward. And then the big piece that really moves forward, the four building projects, is some of the borrowing amount. So there's a total borrowing of 4.6 million proposed. The vast majority of that is for design and project management services for the fire station facility and the public works facility. So we're sort of as far as we can go with those projects until we start getting into much more detailed design. And we can't really start getting into much more detailed design until we hire an owner's project manager because of the, the cost of the project, we're required to have one. So we're proposing funds to bring us through, essentially through bid documents, not all of the design amount, but enough to get us up to the bid phase. And then at that point, we would come back to the town council with, if the town council chooses to, the amount needed for the rest of the design and also the amount that we would need for construction going forward. And then there's a few other projects that we're proposing borrowings for, or items, street sweeper and a pumper fire truck and chiller replacement at the police station. And so again, the sum of those is the 4.6 million. And the pie chart on the right just shows how the capital funds are allocated for FY22. And the reason sort of looks funny, but the, the big chunk there for public works administration, that is the, the design contract, that's why that's such a big slice this year. Usually it's not so big. And same thing for the fire station, that the reason that's such a big slice is because that's the design and project management services for that facility project. And next slide. And that's it. We open up to questions and.
Great. So we don't have a lot of people in the audience, but I would like to ask if there are people in the audience that would like to speak, please raise your hand. Yes, Jeff Lee, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Sir.
Sorry?
This is Jeff Lee.
We can hear you, Jeff, but your voice is really distorted.
Better?
Yes.
Yes, much better.
My microphone settings. Yeah, I do have a comment. I need to say that I disagree with the finance committee's assumption that a debt exclusion override will be required to complete the four building projects for which borrowing is part of the capital improvement program. Massachusetts Division of Local Services reports Amherst's equalized valuation to be $2.7 billion. And 5% of this yields our debt limit of roughly $136 million. This is more than enough to accommodate borrowing for an $80 million school project, a $15 million South Amherst Fire Station, a $20 million DPW facility, and borrowing capacity would even remain for moderately sized Jones Library renovation without requiring a tax override. Amherst's tax rate, which has gone up by 4.1% this year, has risen to be the eighth highest property tax rate in Massachusetts. At the same time, according to census figures, Amherst is one of the poorest communities in the Commonwealth, with 24% of residents earning an income below poverty level. A property tax debt exclusion override will increase Amherst's wealth gap, exacerbate our affordable housing shortage, harm low and middle-income residents, and put upward pressure on rents and mortgages that will escalate student debt and continue to drive families and businesses out of town. A debt exclusion override is fully avoidable by managing the size and timing of the four capital building projects. I call on the town council to be fiscally prudent and sensitive to the economic burdens on Amherst's residents. Revise the long-range capital plan to avoid a future tax override. Thank you.
Jeff, thank you for your comments. Are there other people who have comments at this time? I'm going to continue to wait. I'm going to check with Athena and tell me when we stopped in our presentation.
We had seven minutes of presentation and, and just about three of public comments so far.
Okay. Are there other people who have public comment at this time? We will have general public comment at, during our regular council meeting. This is public comment specifically as it relates to the capital improvement program. Yes, Zoe, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, everyone. This is Zoe Crabtree from District Five. I just wanted to point out very quickly that there have been a lot of very large numbers stated so far on this call, including over, I think it was 4.6 million for just the design and planning for two different capital improvement projects. And I want you to remember those numbers every time that you think or you say that there isn't any money for programs like CREST. It's a lot of money. You just have to make choices. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Zoe. Are there any other public comments regarding the capital improvement program? I'm going to hold open the public comment period until 6:46, at which point I believe we've met the requirements. Are there any other comments with regard to the capital improvement program? Please raise your hand. Looking for public comment. I'm looking for any public comments with regard to the capital improvement program. So last call for public comment. The vote on the capital improvement program will come to the council on the 21st of June. With that, I'm going to adjourn the public forum and the council will go immediately into our regular town council meeting. Again, given Governor Baker's orders of March 12th, 2020, that suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law, we are now allowed to hold this meeting virtually. Given that we have a forum of the council present, I'm calling the June 7th meeting of the town council to order at 6:00. I have my full screen, 6:47 PM. I'll call in each council by name. They need to let me know if they can hear us and we can hear them. And then make sure you please mute again. So let me begin in this case with Shalony Baumellem.
Present.
Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Darcy Devant.
Here.
Lynn Griesmer is present, Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
Thank you very much. There, this media meeting is being recorded by audio, video, and is available live on Amherst Media. It's also being recorded and available later. If there is no chat room, if you experience technical issues, please let us know, and we will either note that or do whatever we can to bring councils back into the meeting. Let's go on to the announcements. We have several meetings coming up, but I want to just point out Race Amity Day, which will be a virtual celebration this year on June 13th at 4 o'clock. And also Juneteenth Community Celebration. And suggest and invite you to check the website to make sure that you see all the various events that are planned for that. We're going to move on. We have no hearing tonight. We are now at general public comment. And I'd like to see a raising of hands of those people who would like to make general public comment. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes. And based on the number of people who wish to speak, the council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. I see a hand, Zoe Crabtree, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hello again, everyone. Zoe Crabtree, District Five. What I wanted to say today during general public comment is that my understanding for what happened at the finance committee meeting last week and what I've witnessed in several town council meetings up to this point indicates to me that there is lack of of understanding and commitment to the importance and the success of the CREST program and the rest of the CSWG's recommendations. Numerous times I have heard counselors talk about wanting to continue hiring at the police department through this time. Reticence to suggest that the place that funding for CREST could come would be the police department. Excitement at perhaps the possibility that the CSWG and the rest of the community could be appeased by the hiring of a person of color to the police department. And I was very disappointed by all of those things. I think that while I've heard a lot of words about how people want the CREST program to succeed, I have also heard that you want to hire two more police officers in the next year, which indicates to me that you're preparing for CREST to fail. If you were expecting CREST to succeed, then there will be no reason to increase the number of police officers that you will then go on to lay off as you reduce the size of the police department over time. The CSWG has put together a very clear and helpful plan for how to reduce the size of the police department over the course of five years that involves very little layoffs and trying to minimize over the course of time using retirements, which is very generous on their part. And what it, what it indicates to me that you're hoping to hire over the next couple of years is that you're going to watch the pilot program, which we already know is only going to be in place probably for about three or four months before the next budget cycle. And I, I just have very little confidence that there is any commitment from this body behind that program, despite all of the words. And yeah, I, all I can say again is that I'm just very, very disappointed. And I hope that you all can see how what you are saying is not what you are communicating with your actions. Thank you.
Zoe, thank you for your comments. I'm going to call on Eleanor Rush and Marcy Bruce Sue, and I'm going to absolutely apologize. They are community sponsors for one of our proclamations that's on the consent agenda, and this is the time when they've been told they may speak. So Eleanor and Marcy, please enter the room, state your name, and please correct how I've pronounced it and speak to your resolution.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Perfect. I'm Macy Parasol. I live at Amity Place in Amherst.
I'm Eleanor Rush. I live on Wood Street. In District Two. And we're here to talk about our resolution. Yes, just. We think deforestation, especially on public lands in Massachusetts, is a really big problem. And we, with this resolution, we want to support these two bills that are looking to stop that problem.
The solution would be pretty much protecting public forest and wildlife. And how we would do that is the two bills we are supporting.
Yeah, H912, an act relative to forest protection, would update old land and wildlife policies. Some of these are even from the era of World War II, and they require logging. H1002, an act to increase protection of wildlife management areas, is also important. Its goal is to designate 30% of the land of the Massachusetts Division of Fishery and Wildlife to be nature reserves by 2030. This is important because older trees are able to absorb more carbon than, than younger trees. We don't have a lot of protections on our forests, and these acts would also help us combat the climate crisis.
Our goal is protect Massachusetts forest and wildlife by passing our bills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening and for putting forth your proclamation. Pat DeAngelis will speak to that later. Are there any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, I'm, we're going to go on to the consent agenda. And the items on this consent agenda will put there in order because it was felt that they would not be controversial. I'm going to go ahead and read the motion. And if there are items that you would like removed, please, please let me know that at the appropriate times. Lot of agendas here tonight. So I'm going to require a second for my motion. It is to move the following items and the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. Waiver of Town Council Rules of Procedure Rule 8.6 for Agenda Item 6A, Juneteenth Proclamation. 6A, Adoption of Juneteenth Proclamation. 6B, Adoption of Resolution in Support of H.R. 40 S-40 Bills in Congress, Commission to Study and Develop Preparation Proposals for African-Americans Act. 6C, Adoption of Resolution in Support of H912, An Act Relative to Forest Protection, and H1011002, An Act to Increase Protection of Wildlife Management Areas. Suspension of Town Council Rules of Procedure 8.4 for Articles, Items 8C, 1 to 2, Request for Permanent Changes in the Public Way. 8E, Referral of Optional Tax Exemptions to Finance Committee, and 11A, Approval of May 24, 2021, Regular Town Council Meeting Minutes. Is there, is there any item anyone would like removed? Alyssa.
Yes, I'd like to remove the H.R. 40 S-40. It's not because I'm against it, it's because I have a question about a part of it, and I think that's better answered later.
Okay. And is there anything else? Kathy Shane.
Yep, if I am muted, the, the resolution we just heard for H.R. 912 and H102, like Alyssa, I am for this, but I have one suggested addition to the resolution to make it clearer.
Okay, are there any other requests? Okay, hearing none. Is there a second with the condition that we are taking off of the consent agenda, 6B and 6C? Is there a second?
Sorry, a second.
Thank you, Andy. Any further discussion at this time? Alyssa, you still have your hand up. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we're going to vote on the consent agenda. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Devant.
Yes.
Griesmer is not aye. Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Aye.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalony Baumellem.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
So we're going to proceed to the next agenda item, which in fact is the proclamation and resolution. The first one, the Juneteenth Proclamation, there was no request to remove it, but I am going to call on Mandy Jo Hanneke to just make a few remarks as one of the council's sponsors.
Yes, thank you. Um, I think our new thing is to read the title and one of the now there for clauses. Myself and Councilor DeAngelis are the sponsors of this one, and the community sponsor is the town manager's office this time. And I do want to make note, I think it's in our now therefore, that this is the first year that Massachusetts will officially recognize Juneteenth as an annual state holiday. And I think that's very important to note going forward. It will always be a state holiday at this point. So the Juneteenth Proclamation is, is basically a celebration of the end of the Civil War and slavery that sadly happened two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation in order for it to get down to Texas. But here's the now therefore. Now therefore, we, the Amherst Town Council, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021, as Juneteenth in Amherst, and in recognition that this is for the first time that it will be celebrated in the Commonwealth as an official state holiday. We invite We invite the residents of the town to join us in a series of events on that day, beginning with a tribute to our soldiers at ten AM in the West Cemetery, followed by a commemoration and Civil War tablet exhibit at eleven AM in the Bang Center. A community jubilee on the Amherst Town Common, starting at one PM with food and entertainment, and culminating in a sunset reception at six PM in the Mill District in North Amherst, featuring an artist collective and fashion show. And I just want to correct, sadly, two and a half years, it took too long to get to Texas. If that was not clear by my comments, it should have gotten that far much quicker.
So thanks to the Town Manager's Office and Mandy Jo and Pat for being a sponsor. On the next one, the Resolutions Board of H R forty uh and S forty Bills in Congress. Alyssa, you asked if this be removed. You'd like to ask a question.
Yes, and I actually also had a comment on the Juneteenth Resolution, so I guess that segues perfectly. Thank you to Manny Joe to summarizing that so well and to all the sponsors for that. I just want to mention that since the resolution itself unfortunately didn't mention our local history prior to the amazing fact that it is now an annual holiday. I want to note that thanks to several community organizers, we started celebrating in Amherst twenty thirteen on the Town Common for Juneteenth, and I know that because I assisted some community members in organizing that event. And it's been an annual celebration since then. It's taken many forms, different locations, never been as big as the thing that we're doing now. But I do want to make sure to put out a special thanks to the Shabazz family and the Duamini Cage family and Michael Manjo for all the work that was done in previous years when it wasn't yet an official state holiday, when it wasn't yet being recognized by Amherst as an annual thing. But it did bring a large number of community members together, and I think it's really exciting that we've now got town staff and everybody working together on a whole series of events associated with the holiday. So it's been wonderful to see that progress, but I didn't want to forget about our history locally on that as well.
Okay, um, now so now we're going to move on to the Resolutions Board of H R forty S forty Bills in Congress. Mandy Jo Hanigan and Pat DeAngelis are the sponsors from the council. The community sponsor is the Amherst African American Heritage Residence for Reparations. And um, Mandy Jo, I think you're the person speaking to this, and then Alyssa, I believe you have a question.
Yep, so um, and I just want to correct, the community sponsor is the Amherst African Heritage Residence for Reparations. Um, I think the word American got in there unintentionally, I believe. Um, but it it is a resolution supporting H R forty. I believe H R forty has been introduced for quite some time in every Congress for a large number of years. Um, but it H R forty is a bill to create a commission to study and develop reparation proposals for African Americans Act is what it's called. Um, and it would create a reparations if passed, it would create a commission to at the federal level to to look at reparations. Um, I'll, do you want me to read the now thereforers now or after the vote?
Um, I think you could read them now. Thank you.
So um now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of Amherst hereby recognizes the date of February twenty fifth of each year as National Reparations Awareness Day. And be it further resolved that the Town Council of Amherst urges its senators and representatives to support the passage of H R forty and S forty and urges the residents of Amherst to engage in supportive activities to educate about the concept of reparations and advocate for the passage of H R forty and S forty in the US Congress.
I just want to ask that we clarify uh the correct name for the community sponsors before I sign the resolution. Uh, Alyssa, you needed to, you wanted to speak to this resolution.
Yes, thank you very much. And so um the one thing is a technical fix, much like the correcting the name of, I know the evolving name of a group. But the other is that I had asked Athena, and when she, of course, immediately changed it. Uh, this originally got posted as just bills in Congress. That's not sufficient specificity for an open meeting law topic. And it's also not sufficient specificity for a resolution. So if you would pop those words that Athena added um onto the top of the resolution before Lynn signs it, that would be really super. The uh, so that's one issue, because nobody would know what we were talking about otherwise, except the people who've been following this for years, because it's been around for so long, as Manny Joe said. The other thing was, I didn't see any material in our packet about a National Reparations Day, which I know nothing about. And given that it we can certainly put on our calendar then to do an annual proclamation associated with that. I'm not sure how this fits in with this, because this is not a known quantity to me, and I'm wondering if this is necessary to put in here. Because obviously, it's already passed. That time period is past, and maybe we're better off to have a real proclamation associated with that when the time comes for next February. Because I don't know what it means, and I don't know why I would vote for that one. I don't know what it means, but I want to vote support all the rest of it.
So what you're asking is that the reference to the um I'm trying to find the right paragraph.
One Mandy Jo just read, actually. It's the now therefore.
Okay. Okay, um. Okay, is there a discussion on that? Because at this point, it refers to it in general, but it has passed this year, but it has not passed next year.
The timing has passed. We have not actually moved the motion yet.
Right. Um, okay, so let me do the motion and then we'll see whether we're going to change anything. Uh, to adopt the resolution in support of House Bill um forty and Senate Bill forty, Bills in Congress. Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African American Act as presented. Is there a second?
I have that as as amended by adding the words Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African Americans Act and removing the word American, so the community sponsor name reads Amherst African Heritage Residence for Reparations.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Okay, uh, and further discussion? Alyssa.
So I move to amend by striking the first now therefore be it resolved. Strike that entire paragraph, which would then cause the subsequent paragraph to be titled now therefore be it resolved. Not because I don't care about the concept, it's because I think it sounds like a wonderful concept in theory. I can't find any recent celebration of that in quick Google search. We haven't been given the information. And I would be thrilled to have us do this for next year while in advance of February twenty fifth.
Is there a second to that motion? That amendment? I'm not hearing a second.
A second it, Schwartz.
Okay, Sarah Schwartz, a seconded it. Um, and Alyssa, you've already spoken to the motion. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to it? To the amendment? George.
Yeah, I think Alyssa raises a good point. At the actual discussion, uh, and my colleagues, NGOL, can correct me, but I don't recall we actually discussed this in any detail. We talked about a number of things, but this particular um reference was not discussed, so I can't shed any light on on this. Um, I'm sorry, we didn't raise it, but we didn't, and there were no materials presented. Um, so I don't think it would do any harm if this were removed. Uh, and then in the future, um presented again, uh, in advance of February twenty fifth with some uh documentation, et cetera, perhaps it certainly would have more force and for more and more meaning, since at least our committee uh can add nothing uh to this, because it was not discussed. So I would be uh willing to strike it. For those reasons.
Okay, Evan Ross.
Yeah, my my understanding of how we've been doing things, right, is that we, to declare something a day, uh, we issue a proclamation yearly, correct? So is there any ha- have we done this before where we say this day of every year will be a certain day via resolution? Because because I can't think of a time we've done that. We usually do yearly proclamations. So maybe that's a question for G O L, because Alyssa, I think raises an interesting point about this.
I I believe that was reason behind this. George?
I can't recall. Um, though my memory is not that good, but I can't recall us having done uh what Evan has suggested. It, these are usually standalone, um, and then are um presented again on a yearly basis. So again, that would be to my point that it makes sense to remove this um and then present it uh at a future date, um and then make it, assuming it passes, make it a annual um proclamation.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the amendment? Darcy.
I guess I would just say that this is a situation where we have community sponsors. Um, they put this forward. I think it's would be great to just go with their language and I'm totally good with it, and I think it's kind of weird to take it out. So I would not vote to take it out.
George. You're you're muted, George.
All right, um, my point actually is, uh, one other item was not mentioned. I, Manny, props was just concerned about time, but it was also further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Senator Elizabeth Warren, Senator Edward Markey, and Representative Jim McGovern. So again, the thought is that it this might make sense, because the focus here is on the act. Um, and so again, I apologize, G O L should have brought this up, but it did not. Um, and that's me as the chair, but um just pointing out that um there is a further resolve, it's the last one, and it's going to our representatives in Congress, and the focus of this particular resolution is in fact the bills in Congress. So um upon reflection, it does seem like this is something that is uh should be is really not um directly relevant to this um resolution. So it does again seem to me make sense to take it out um and then represent it at another point in time when it would make more sense.
Okay, the amendment's been made in seconded. It's to remove the um first paragraph that says now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of Amherst hereby recognizes the date of February twenty fifth of each year as National Reparations Awareness Day, and the next paragraph would begin now therefore be it resolved that the Amherst Town Council urges its senators, et cetera, et cetera. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're going to bring the vote to the amendment. Um, and I'm going to start on the vote on the amendment with Darcy Damont.
No.
Lynn Greasmer's yes. Mandy Jo Hanigan.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Hey.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that clearly.
abstain.
Uh, Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz.
Yes.
Charlie Baumell.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Hi.
So we have uh eleven in favor, one opposed, one abstention, no absence. That's the that is for the amendment. We're now going to bring the full vote forward to the council, which is on the original motion, and that's to adopt the resolution in support of, and I'm going to ask actually the town or to the clerk to the council to read the resolution, please.
You'd like the resolution or the motion?
The motion, please.
Motion is to adopt the resolution in support of H R forty S forty Bills in Congress. Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African Americans Act as amended by adding the words Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African Americans Act and removing the word American, so that the community sponsor reads Amherst African Heritage Residence for Reparations. And by end of amendment by removing the paragraph that reads now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of Amherst hereby recognizes the date of February twenty fifth of each year as National Reparations Awareness Day and.
And beginning the next paragraph. Okay, and beginning the next paragraph with Athena.
I'm sorry, I missed.
And begin the next paragraph with now therefore be it resolved, striking be it further resolved.
Okay.
Is there any question about the motion? Motion has been made. I believe it's been seconded. Yes. All right, then we're going to move to a vote. Uh, Greasmer is yes. Uh, Mandy Jo Hanigan.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam. Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz.
Hi.
Charlie Baumell.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
Pat DeAngelis.
Hi.
Darcy Damont.
Yes.
The passage unanimously. We're going to move on to um the resolution in support of Ha- House nine twelve, an act relative to forest protection and House one zero zero two, an act to increase protection of wildlife management areas. Uh, we've already voted um to um, no, we have not. I'm going to make the motion looking for a second to adopt the resolution in support of House nine twelve, an act relative to forest protection and House one zero zero two, an act to increase protection of wildlife management areas as presented. Is there a second?
DeAngelis.
Okay, and uh, thank you, Pat, and thanks for your sponsorship. Uh, there was a question, uh, and I believe that was from Kathy.
Um, I just, I thought the two speakers were terrific on this, and if I read the resolutions on that second to last paragraph, now therefore be it resolved that we support the passage, I don't see in that section a sentence that would say what each of these bills does. Um, they pretty quickly gave a quick summary of nine twelve and a quick summary of one thousand and two um that they do slightly different things. I just think it would be helpful for those who read our resolutions to have some idea of the content. The other resolution we just had had that. So I don't have the specific sentence, you know, and when they talk, they said the second one thousand and two sets a goal of thirty percent fish and wildlife um protected by twenty thirty. So I don't know whether there's something that could just add a sentence that said these bills would, and then a short clause for nine twelve and then a short clause for one thousand and two. Otherwise, I'm totally in support of this. It just requires people to go and read the whole legislation to figure out what we might be talking about.
Mandy Jo.
And uh, the third whereas summarizes them not as specifically as you said, but it does summarize them by saying these acts support proforestation, an idea which considers the future by not only planting trees, but more importantly, protecting our forests, particularly those on public lands, so that they can grow old.
And is that both nine twelve, and I thought one thousand and two was something a bit diff- you know, so I just, so man, do you think this is enough so people know what's in it? Um, I just found them, so what would they do? I, you know, so that set a goal of thirty percent was pretty specific to me on the second bill. So as I said, I do not know these two pieces of legislation well, and I went and looked them both up to see exactly what they were doing. I didn't get it as much from the previous one that we did. I knew more of the content of each bill. So if no one, I'm not going to belabor this point. If no one feels like I do, I'm perfectly fine with this, as is.
Okay, Pat.
I guess I would like Eleanor and Macy to have an opportunity to respond um to this suggestion.
And Pat, I'd exactly, I wouldn't want to write it. I have no idea. Yeah.
So could we bring Eleanor and Macy in to respond?
Sure, uh, please bring Eleanor and Macy in and ask them to respond to the suggestion.
Um, I think the suggestion was pretty valid. Um, it does make sense that some people, when reading that, they want to.
they want to know what
More about it.
Specifically what the bills are doing. Um. We could possibly, yeah, we will be willing to
To change that if you guys thought, but if you guys thought it was good, then we are totally good with it too.
Yeah.
Okay, in order to change it, we would have to refer it back to G O L. Because we're not going to try to amend this on the spot. So I'm going to look to Pat as the council sponsor, as to whether you want to go ahead with the way it is or go back to G O L for amendments.
I given, I would like to vote on it as is.
Okay, Eleanor and Macy, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'll say I'm not in opposition of doing that. I just think it would be useful.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, so in this case, the motion's been made and seconded. Are there any other comments? Shalony.
Yeah, I would support Kathy's suggestion to add an explanation because it does impact different people in different ways, and I think it would be helpful for people to know what the resolution is. And it sounds like the community sponsors are willing to add to it. I know it's a little bit more work for G O L, but I think it's worth doing it correctly, not correctly, but more. Yeah. So.
Alyssa.
Thank you. I think it just speaks to, you know, we we don't ask G O L to do that, right? We don't ask them to tell us whether or not the content of the bills is great. We we assume that we probably agree with these community sponsors, but we don't know that unless we read it ourselves. And so I guess the question is, are we giving G O L direction to do this in future? Is that is that something we want them to tell people? If you want us to recommend this to the town council, then you need to put a little more in here. But this one will continue with because of its timeliness. Or are are we just expecting that every counselor is going to read every piece of legislation that somebody brings through like this, whether it's mosquitoes or wildlife or logging, et cetera, and think about possible impacts on local businesses, et cetera? I I just don't know what our real role here is beyond, we really always want to support everything Tim Austin's class does because they do amazing amount of research and terrific work on these presentations every year. And so we're not trying to single them out. It's that we're trying to say, do we expect, what what does it mean to have the town council say yes to this? Does that mean? Okay, how many of you actually went and read the legislation here? I'm not asking for a poll. I'm saying seriously, how many of you read it? Do you know what the implications are? Does that matter? And is that something we would have expected G O L to add in? Because I don't know that we've ever told G O L that before.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the clerk to make sure we're using the clock. Mandy Jo.
Yeah, I I know there's no motion on the table to refer, and I would not support such a motion for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's not G O L's job as this council has made clear on many, many, many occasions. But but further, a couple of other things, G O L is running out of time to do what it is supposed to be doing. And if you want G O L to come back with this one in another two weeks, when we're interviewing and trying to appoint finance committee members, when we're trying to appoint and or, you know, recommend appointments for an entire districting advisory board, we've got G O L members that want to do something else. And I don't see this as important enough of a change to take more time from G O L, number two. And number three, our next council meetings at the very last week of this, these sixth graders is school, and we wouldn't want to pass this after their school year is done. And so I think it is good enough now. I think this resolution shows what it these two acts support, even if it's not as specific as some counselors might want. And I think we should do it tonight.
Okay, thanks, Mandy Jo. Andy.
The only thing I'd add to what Mandy just said is that one piece we don't know is what the timetable is in the legislature for consideration of this legislation and whether there are any hearings coming up and that would be useful to have a resolution before the committees that are doing hearings. So I think we're missing a piece of information that affects delay.
Okay, George.
Just remind the council that G O L voted this clear, consistent, and actionable, and the vote was five to zero. This item is no more specific or less specific than many other items we've sent to you in the past. So I don't understand that you might like to have more specificity, but that could be pretty much applied to almost any resolution that that is brought before you. So we will do whatever the council decides. But I would just say that we voted five zero that this is ready, ready for prime time.
Right, Shalony.
Yeah, I'm okay with this particular one as is, but I just want to raise something, the the point that was just raised about, because I was for a future agenda item for the town council, because I was privy to one of the discussions at G O L where there was a lot of lack of clarity around what is substantive changes and what is. And it it was very confusing with this community sponsors there in the room and us discussing, not me, but yeah, but like, is this something? And so it's, I think there is some, that that's a discussion for the town council to have about what kind of decisions G O L can make on their own. And when does it come here? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
It it makes sense, but we're not going to pursue it tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's an agenda item that because we keep postponing it, but that's, I'm just saying it's a future agenda item for council. But yeah, I just want to be clear, because I didn't say what it was, but I I think George and Mandy Jo know what I'm talking about and Darcy and Pat. What I'm talking about, so.
Having been on G O L, I understand as well.
Okay, you know what I'm talking about. Okay, that's
Yes. The motion's been made and seconded. Are there any further discussions relevant to the motion? We're going to pass the resolution as it is presented, and so I'm going to begin with Mandy Johannicky.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Hi.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalony Baumel.
Yes.
Melissa Brewer.
Aye.
Patty Angelus.
Aye.
Darcy Demont. Darcy. Darcy, please unmute and vote.
Hi, sorry, some, I don't think I muted myself, but yes.
And Griesmer's aye. It passes unanimously. We want to thank the sponsors and also we want to thank Tim Austin for his continued work with his students. Thank you both. We're going to move on. And because I mentioned this to you earlier in when I sent out the timing and order of the agenda, we are actually going to now jump to item eight D, which is the F Y twenty two budget. I'm going to call on Andy Steinberg as Chair of Finance to talk about the Finance Committee's work and recommendations. And let me note in advance two items. First of all, we are not taking any votes on the budget tonight. We are going to cluster all of those votes together, probably on April twenty first, so that there's no confusion as to what we're voting on. On the second is at some point later on, I will want to speak to a motion that I made in the Finance Committee and will also speak to that in the Finance Committee. But Andy, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not going to try and repeat everything that's in the report to the that was submitted by the Finance Committee to the council because I assume that everybody's got an opportunity to read it. And so really, it'll be a question of Kathy and I as Vice Chair and Chair responding to questions for the most part, and other members of the committee who are present on the from the council also responding. There are a couple of things, however, I want to do in the name of corrections. One is that in the section towards the end of the report, talking about reparations, there was a little bit of a misstatement and it requires a clarification. So I wanted to put an addition into the report, which I can only do verbally today at this meeting, which is why I'm doing it in this fashion. The report, the previous report mistakenly stated that the proposed two hundred and six thousand dollars transfer was based on previous transfer transfers from free cash to stabilization. This should have said that two hundred and six thousand dollars was based on the amount of cannabis tax revenue collected in F Y twenty. Well, the amount of the initial contribution was based on the cannabis tax revenue. The committee did not agree on whether cannabis tax revenue should be the funding stream moving forward. So that was one clarification. The other thing that I realized after sending the report is that we reported briefly on the presentations made by every functional area except one, which is the one that we all live in, that's general government. And that I would have worked to try and get a supplemental report done this weekend to add, but that wasn't in my life this weekend. So as a result, we are going to do an amendment before the council actually is considering the budget to add a section on general government, planning the presentations that were made. So with that, I'll turn it back to Lynn and Kathy or I members of the committee will respond if there are any questions.
Are there questions at this time? Mandy Jo.
Thank you. I have a question actually for the town manager and probably the finance director, which is, thank you, first of all, for the additional memo we received today. I really appreciated it to set out in writing what those transfers might look like or reallocations might look like or will look like based on prior presentations, even though, as I know, it doesn't affect our actual bottom line vote. But I appreciate you doing the extra work for that. The end of that memo had a sentence, the goal for F Y twenty two staffing relating to the CREST program is to begin implementation of the program and obtain sufficient data in order to assess the next phase of implementation. And I just wanted you to expand expand on what that actually means and what your intention behind that sentence is.
Yes, Paul.
Thank you. And so, yeah, I appreciate the the nudge to put this in writing, the memo in writing, because it it does speak for clarification for the public who may not have read the memo. What it does is it outlines the vote, the the division of funds within the general areas of government, moving forty thousand dollars from public safety to community services, which we had identified before. It does not affect the bottom line. And also to recognize the creation of the D E I director position is in the town manager's office, which is also where the economic development director position was. So that's a swap and it just changed. And so that doesn't impact the budget directly or not. In terms of, you know, where we're going for this, and I I keep calling this an implementation program, not a pilot program, because I believe that we've already determined that we're going to do this program. It's a matter of of how we how we get there. And I think that's an important thing. This there, you know, we want to do it right. And we have fully engaged our senior staff, and I've asked Mary Beth Ogilovitz to be here today as well, if she wants to address, add add on to some things that I will say. Because we really are working from the blueprint given to us from by the Community Safety Working Group and the information that they collected. And our mission is to get a program up and running this fiscal year, which is a pretty aggressive timeline. If for those of you who have established programs in the past, say, I know that that's a we we recognize that that's a aggressive timeline to the public. It seems like what could take so long? But it takes time because there's a million questions. So you have to answer everything from liability questions for the for the responders to what power do the responders have versus with the with the police have and things like that. So the mission on this is to build the program in F Y twenty two and then establish a funding mechanism to grow the program over time, because we do believe it. I do believe it will need to be grown over time. You know, we are seeking partnerships with other communities through the Kennedy School. We're seeking additional funding from outside. We were, we received a ninety thousand dollar designation in the Senate budget, which we're really appreciative of Senator Comerford for. We think there's there are other funds out there that can support the program, at least in the first one, two, or three years, but we also consider it a high priority to get a stream of of a funding revenue, a funding system so that this program can continue. And I think that that's one of the things that when we come back to you, likely in the fall, with a plan for how to build, how to create a new department, you would be asking us those questions, and that's where we're headed. I'd like to ask Mary Beth if she wants to add anything to that, if that's okay, Lynn?
Absolutely. Mary Beth, welcome. And would you like to add some comments?
Yes, thank you. You know, I I first, I guess I'd like to just begin with really affirming the commitment of the town of Amherst and the staff and employees to making this program, not only creating it, but making it an incredible success. And we are all committed to creating the best, most effective program. I I think that when we talk about staffing patterns, we're really looking at, at this point, our best educated guests. And I think that that most importantly, we're looking at having the right number of persons with the required skills needed. And I think that that for us is a moving target because there are pieces that are known, there are people, pieces that can be estimated, and then there are pieces that will fall into place as we continue our investigation. So we can begin by looking at the historical nine one one data, but that still needs to be analyzed. And then we have to, from that, we will have experts that will be helping us hopefully through LEAP and or the Kennedy School that will help us to identify and estimate that unique subset of questions and calls that will be received from the community because there is the implementation of the CREST program. So even if we took a a diversion rate of twenty percent or even five to eight percent, which Kahoots has said that that's in the final analysis, what they were able to divert, there still are some other unknowns around the types of calls we will be receiving and how our community will be accessing this program. So that information needs to develop. And I think that if we look at pilots and models, one of the most similar communities that I could identify was Olympia, Washington, which has a population of fifty five thousand. So Denver, Austin, and Olympia all started with these smaller pilot programs looking at how can we identify the need in stage one and then expand on it. And I know there's been a lot of talk about failure. I I haven't been able to find a single program that has failed. These programs have a long history of success in use and also in growth. But when we look at Olympia as an example, you see that they are a community that's somewhat similarly sized to Amherst. But they began their program with teams of two persons, and their call time was between seven A M. and nine P M. seven days a week. And the reason why I bring that up is is not so much the twenty four seven versus a particular time, but that each community, Denver, Austin, Olympia, has a different need, has a different desire for coverage. Some of them target a downtown area. Some of them target areas where they have a high population of homelessness. Others engage in homeless outreach or other outreach into other communities that are underserved. We in Amherst have to figure out what is our unique need, and I think that that's one of the really compelling pieces of that potential Harvard partnership. So Paul has written a very compelling application for that. And and that would give us the opportunity to design an individualized program. But what they found in Olympia, I think, which is most interesting, is that when they started with this smaller group of community responders and what the information and the research revealed was that what they needed to build most extensively were what they call familiar faces. And the distinction is that the community responders have specialized training in behavioral health and mental health and other social service backgrounds. and other social service background. But what they needed were these peer identified navigators. So people who had lived experience, because, and, and, and I, and I think that this is the piece that I think is analogous to Amherst. They had, their biggest challenge was a lack of social services. They did not have long-term social services in their community. And we are very similarly situated. And I say that from sitting in the seat of the Director of Senior Services and from working on the homelessness issues. We don't have a crisis center. We don't have a stabilization center here. Many of the facilities that made Kahoots so very successful were situated in their building, where they would directly bring people. We will have to build those networks and build those linkages and find the ways that we're going to long-term serve people. And if you look at the studies around Olympia, Washington, what we know is that the piece that they had to grow were these peer responders. So that's why I say it's most important to think about what is the right number with the right skills. And we don't yet know that. And anyone who's done research, I, I've just been part of one research project where I was a co-PI. And, and the most important thing that I came away from with that experience is that in year one, the most important piece that you end up learning are the unanticipated outcomes. And the thing, so you can have a projection, you can have a model, but you will always learn something that you had no idea was an identified issue or an identified problem. And so that's my piece, both to the town council and to the public, is to say, we are committed to doing this right and well and growing it in a way that meets the needs. So rather than hiring an abundance of community responders, we may not need community responders. We may need other identified individuals. And the hope is that this would, would allow us to do that. And the responsive design of the system is the other piece of the component. So when people have asked the question, I've heard posed a number of times, well, how will you know if it's effective? One of the many metrics that Harvard Kennedy School would be helping us with and also LEAP is really a responsive design, so that there is user feedback coming back in real time, which will help us to identify what's important, what are we missing, what do we need, right? We, we are not Denver, we are not Austin, and we are not even Olympia, Washington. And we don't yet know how our community will respond to this and what they'll identify. So, so that's, I think, the longer version of how I think this could build in a way that's successful and meets the needs here that we still don't know.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Are there other questions at this time? Shalini?
Thank you, Mary Beth. I really appreciate the expanded response on how you were coming, because that was one of my questions, is how did the other program start? It's, and so that's really helpful for me to process that information. So two questions that remain are if, once you do the LEAP work, get the LEAP to work with us and we find that we actually do need more people. So we start out with the phase one and with six to eight people that you have budgeted. And then based on LEAP and then our work, we find within this budget here that we need more people. So is there some way that we will be able to do that? Or how do we respond to that situation arising in the budget? And then the second question was, what I also heard you say is that that was really helpful to understand the peer people that you talked about and, and having networks. So we can, you know, we, we, we may respond to have community responders for addictions or you may respond to other quality of life issues. But then we also need the networks. Where will these people be taken or what happens to them after that? And we need to build those networks. So is there, are we at all looking at existing networks or nonprofits like CSOs or other, instead of having in-house, because I also read that we need 500 hours of training for crisis responders and plus 40 hours in classroom training. And would it be better to, and are we even considering that? I think I've asked that question. I can't remember the answer now. But are we considering that at all? See, working with CSOs and as an, as a, as a transition thing. So we start off with an existing organization that is trained in crisis response. We start off with them and then in the meanwhile, we figure out what is our unique need and then get the training of our own in-house department going. Yeah.
So I, I can take the second part of that probably more easily. With regard to design, whether you go with an outside agency as your contracted provider versus building a town department, communities have tried it both ways. So for instance, in Denver, they begin and also similar to the Kahoots program. I, or strike that. In Denver, what they did is they started with their own program, their own town department. And after the first year, they have been searching for an outside agency to take that over. So that's when they've been hoping that they can find a community partner to take it over because of the depth of linkages needed and the depth of the need for the social services within that community. Other communities have gone with the, you know, the outside contracted social service agency. You know, there are advantages and disadvantages to both of those. I think that most importantly, when you're talking about these two programs, they provide two different types of services. One, there is the crisis response. So somebody comes to a situation and they help to de-escalate it and resolve it in that very moment in terms of the intensity and making sure that everybody is safe. And that our, our, a community feels like there's an improved response. And that takes into account their needs and their identity. The second part, which is, which is, I think, equally as important, and in fact, maybe sometimes more important, are the ability, the ability to link people to social services long-term. And in many of the models, what they have talked about is the importance and the impact of those long-term linkages. Because if, if you are responding, what they found in Olympia is that they were responding to the same people over and over and they had no answers. They had no resources for them. And so that begins to devolve of a situation, right? So no matter what, I, I think that it would be prudent for the community to look at both of those models and to look at social service agencies that are within this area and their willingness and or capacity to undertake that either as a contracted provider or not. I don't know, you know, we, I will say this is that the social service agencies that serve Amherst do not have a robust capacity at this point in time in terms of, of reaching out for this kind of work. Could they develop it? There's always that potential. And I think that that's a question that, that, you know, remains that we have not, you know, we haven't discussed with C, CSWG and also other vulnerable populations. But they, the probably most potent positive outcome of an outside contracted provider is that they come fully trained with motivational interviewing and substance abuse and cultural humility and cultural responsiveness. So you don't have to do that initial investment around the training. And the other piece is, I'm sure you've all had the experience of being referred to a specialist as a, for some other treatment. If you are being referred within a social agency, so if a social service agency has a full array of, of resources, so whether it be crisis, stabilization, recovery treatment, harm mitigation. If it's a referral that is inter-agency, it tends to be smoother, faster, more effective, right? Because you're working with your fellow colleagues. And when you're doing a referral to an outside agency, it can be more cumbersome. It can be, sometimes, you know, you, you might, you might lose a couple of days. And in these kinds of cases and instances, you really want to make sure you are doing and handing off what we call a warm referral, a way in which someone instantly has some access. So either way, we would have to either build those linkages tightly for those services or hire some, an agency that, that has that capacity. And I know there's only one agency in this area that is looking at potentially at this point in time with some work, but they are not in this county. So I think it's a, it's a question to, to, to ponder. And then in terms of the budget piece, I didn't know if Paul wants to address that more.
Yeah, I was gonna just quickly add to that. So we're sort of in a transitional year with our revenues, coming out of the pandemic and going into the fall post-pandemic and seeing the colleges and universities come back. So we're going to be assessing our revenues frequently in the fall. If the data comes out and it shows that we should have more community responders and the, and the revenues are in a place where additional responders could be added. That's something that the council and Paul could consider. If next year's not the, if there is no additional funding next year, then it'd be a proposal for FY23 to add funding for additional responders.
Thank you. I want to make sure that we realize this, but this meeting right now or this agenda item is about the budget. And I think we all have many, many questions and still many discussions to be had about the responder program. But I want to make sure that we get the questions responded to regarding the budget. Dorothy.
So my, my question has to do with, you said the social services agencies in this area are not at this moment robust. And do you think that one of, if we had steady need and paid a higher wage, do you think that salary has something to do with that? This is to Mary Beth.
I, I, I can't pinpoint for you why that is, whether it's salary, whether it's capacity building. I think there's probably a number of issues that, that flow into that. And also simply that these programs, you know, we're generating something new. So community responders are just not something that, you know, that people have on staff. Are there people who could pop, you know, who could do it who are on staff? I'm sure that that would be appropriate.
Thank you. Alyssa?
So since it feels like we're going to be like right up against it when we actually go to vote on the budget, I would, do want to make sure I get a couple of questions out right now. One is in regards to the excellent memo that Mandy Jo referenced that Paul wrote to us and emailed us earlier today, but I find no evidence that it's in our packet for everyone else to see. So I know Monday is a terrible time to be adding stuff, but I don't think the public can see it. And I think the public would find it very useful, just as Mandy Jo indicated. Secondly, is a comment slash question, which I brought up before, and it feels like now's the time to fix it. And if I'm the only one who feels this way, then obviously I should not rule the day. But I'm really uncomfortable with the fact that we've wedged CREST under social services. I'm not convinced that using old budget lines, just because they're convenient, sounds like programs for people in need, as opposed to telling the story we want to tell about community safety. The community safety that the CREST program creates for everyone. We talk a lot about the social services that need to work with CREST. But having a CREST program itself obviously is going to fail if we don't have any agencies to refer people to. But at the same time, CREST is also an alternative to calling the police in general. And as that, it feels very, I don't, I know we don't want to put it under public safety because it's not going to be under the police. And I appreciate that it's under Mary Beth, but I don't want it to seem like it's the kind of program where we give money to Big Brothers, Big Sisters, or it's a block grant program. It's a real separate thing that's part of our community approach. And so I would really ask that we put some creativity down so that we have budget lines that make sense moving forward associated with that. In terms of a completely different topic is, I appreciate that Andy said that general government will be covered in a future finance committee report and that'll be great. And I had previously written an email back on May 20th, because I don't go to most finance committee meetings, talking about the section on general government that under town council, speaking of budget lines, under town council is listed the school committee stipends, which A, makes no logical sense on the face of anything. And B, suddenly put school committee stipends in a place that it wasn't before, which implies that we haven't been paying the school committee stipends for the two previous years the charter's been in effect. And three, that they're listed at $13,000, not at $16,000. They should be listed at the amount that the charter lists, not whether or not individual school committee members can take them. So I'm hoping that'll all be covered in the general government budget, because if not, I'll be bringing it up again. And it's such a picky little dumb thing. I'd rather be talking about policy things. Thank you.
Thanks. Kathy?
You know, I, I too appreciate the memo, Paul. And Paul, there was a longer, a longish or longer presentation to the finance committee on May 27th. And one of the things that is in that budget that is, goes beyond what we have in town resources is another $250,000 that's coming from outside money to support the program for vehicles. And Andy's written that up in the finance committee report, but we're talking about a first year of nearly $500,000 that's being proposed. So my question is less on how we do that this coming year in FY22. But I think I'd like to continue the discussion we started to have in finance. What about FY23? Okay, because I know we're only focused on FY22, but the way we can do it in FY22 is we're only talking about a half year. You know, that people won't be being paid for a whole year. People won't be getting health insurance for a whole year. Pensions won't even be triggered until a year down the road after they're being paid. So to, to do everything Mary Beth just talked about, you know, start it well, learn from it, build on it. We have to have a, a plan that's not a one-year plan where, the other way I could call it is a half-year plan in terms of a budget. And then it's a one-year plan in terms of study and set it up. So, and FY23, for those who haven't looked at it, is a really tough year on the operating budget, because we're beefing up what we're spending on capital. With a library coming in and what you just heard from the capital plan slating some borrowing. So we are squeezing the operating budget even more than we squeezed it this year in terms of a percent increase. So I think these are going to be hard choices for us. And I want to make sure if we set priorities, we're setting priorities that can succeed, rather than setting stuff up in a way that two things come together and we go, oh, I didn't realize that if we do this, we can't do that. So I just, I just want to bring that conversation in. And it, when I looked at the case study on Olympia, they were extremely fortunate. They started with about $500,000 on the responder side. Then they also did the familiar faces. And then wonder of wonders, an $800,000 grant came in and enabled a whole lot of things to happen. You know, so if we have the potential for some of this money, whether it's from the state or the federal government or foundations, I mean, I absolutely think we should grab it. But that's, that's a way they could bring it, bring a program in and build and make it more robust. So we shouldn't, we can, we can only focus on FY22 right now. But we are voting a five-year capital plan by voting for the, the debt financing in the coming year. And the combination of the library plus the other big pieces. You can look at the line on how much our indebtedness goes up, which is why capital budget operating is really squeezed. 23 is the worst of the year, but 24, 25 and 26 don't look great.
Please wrap up.
That's it.
Thank you. Paul, did you want to respond or Sean?
I, I agree 100% with the, it's the multi, it's the year, the out years that are more challenging. And that's why, that's our mission is to address those when we present the full department, creation of the new department to you in the fall.
I'll just add quickly that the, the $250,000 from the grant, it does include vehicles, but also includes training, consulting and other things that we view as potentially one upfront cost that wouldn't recur in future years, but just want to add that.
Sarah?
So I guess I just wanted to express this now while we're still sort of have a chance to work with a budget. But I'm concerned a little bit about how the CREST program is being presented. When we met with the Community Safety Working Group, there were three police officers present. And I felt that in a way, what was being said was that conventional policing is what we are doing. And we are adding the CREST program, but it seems to me that it, that the feel that I'm getting is that while we're committed to it, it's, it's a program that is definitely social services and, you know, helping out people, maybe who have mental health issues or, you know, learning issues or houselessness. And I really want to, to make it, to say again that this came about because people don't want conventional policing, that there is an issue with the culture of policing. conventional policing, that there is an issue with the culture of policing. And I want, I want to really, I want to emphasize that and that there are people who are going to call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, who are not going to want to see police, armed police officers show up with their issue and that it might actually escalate the issue. And I, I just wanted to try to bring that focus back, that this is an alternative to policing. And just to make it clear that I would not support a budget that is hiring more police officers right now, when I think we should be balancing out the CREST program and phasing out armed policing. The last thing is, is another thing that we heard was that private institutions and universities in our area, colleges, you know, they have done away with their, you know, campus police. But from what I understand, the parents and the, the kids who go there should know that they're not getting rid of conventional police. That those colleges and universities has asked the town of Amherst to have our police respond in need. And I, I think that needs to be made really clear. And I'm, I'm not, I'm, I appreciate all of the work that has been done. And so I'm, I'm not saying that I don't, I just wanted to bring that lens back to the issue. Thanks.
Are there any other comments at this time? Sean.
Yeah, I really appreciate Sarah's comments and about bringing back that focus again of, and I think somebody else also did bring that up right before, forget who. But just the idea that this is not about just for addiction and homelessness, but how do we create that sense of safety, especially for BIPOC communities? And so that's really important to keep that in the center of this discussion. And I also want to invite us to think about as we're shifting this paradigm of policing and community safety, that we also bring in people who currently are police. We may disagree with the institution of policing, but we still have people who are police and who have been working in our communities. And many of them doing the best of their ability, what they knew within the model that was then. So I think as we're transitioning into a new paradigm, the idea is not to now shut their voices or, you know, like, I'm not saying we're, I guess what I'm trying to say is that can we bring in, create a circle where we're inviting people who are going to be impacted and policing is going to be impacted. And at the same time, while we're in transition also in speaking and reading to other, with other police people, especially black police, one of them being my friend who joined police is a black male in his fifties, who's joined policing so that he can bring change from the inside. And I was talking to him about defunding and what does he feel? And he said, even as we are, they use CSOs in their or crisis responders in their community. And he said, there's a lot that needs to be changed within the policing institution, like teaching de-escalation and how the training is done. And that has to be shifted. And he felt that, but in terms of crisis responders, there is still police without uniforms going, without weapons and, but they're still escorting, even in the case of like domestic violence or whatever, even though we have crisis responders. I may not agree, this may be one person, but all I'm saying is that when we are changing how policing is done, it's important to bring in people who have been police. We may not, we may not agree with them, but even with the remaining police that exist, we have to bring them in to their circle to hear what is their perspective on this. And that's all I wanted to say. And, and that's to speak to. And I guess the question then is, because it does sound weird that we're talking about shifting the paradigm and we're also hiring new police people. So it seems there's this gap. And so, and I haven't heard the reasoning from either Paul or the police chief, that why is it that right now we need, so at least the public needs to understand why are we asking for more police? And even though my own personal research shows that it's because while we in transition, the crisis responders or even community response. I don't know, at least in crisis responders, what I heard is that the police will still be escorting the crisis, community responders. And so we still have a place for police. But anyway, I, I don't know. I don't know these answers, but I would want to hear from Paul or the police chief. Why are we asking for more police when we're moving to a different model?
Paul, did you, would you like to respond?
So, so to be clear, we're not asking for more police. In fact, there are two fewer police officers that are being funded this year than there are budgeted in the current fiscal year. So there are two fewer police officer positions. We've removed two of them. That's where the hundred and thirty thousand dollars comes from. There are vacancies in the police and there have been, and we've pretty much survived the last year with the vacancies because the university and the colleges were depopulated. We don't know what the fall will bring. And if it's the same level of intensity, then, you know, I don't want to eliminate, eliminate the police department until we have a suitable replacement. And that's the overlap that you talked about was until we know how many calls are actually going to be transitioned out. And whether it's going to be a co-responder model, backup model, or a stay out of the way model. And I think there's a lot of different ways and calls may have different approaches too. We can have, this is a small town, we can figure out the nuances of it, I think.
Thank you. Andy.
The point that was raised in the finance committee report was that we do need police for response, but we don't know the number. And that that's something that we really aren't going to be able to figure out until we establish the CREST program. It's sort of the flip side of how many responders do we need is how many police do we need? But we do need police response, I think, is ultimately what I've been saying individually, not from the finance committee point of view, but from my experience in working in the field of domestic violence. And I was just reminded that in eastern Massachusetts, there were two police officers who were both injured fairly severely, but fortunately not fatal at a response to a domestic violence call. That is the nature of responding to calls where violence is happening. And I as a individual council, again, not this finance committee chair, I'm looking to our professional staff and Paul and Mary Beth to kind of look at the both questions on both sides. What staffing do we need to effectively serve the community, both for community responders and from our police?
Thanks, Andy. So I want to mention that in the finance committee meeting, and this has been repeated in a couple other places. So I felt it was important to say it here. I actually made a motion that passed with three people in finance committee in favor, one abstention and one opposed. But I want to clarify the motion. And the motion was to recommend to the town council that they direct the town manager to seek funds to fill eight community responder positions. And the other elements of the program as proposed on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty-one and report back to the residents of Amherst by January thirty-one. There's three places I want to particularly clarify. First of all, when I say seek funds, I mean grant and contract funds. This is, and I mean multi-year grant and contract funds. This is a hot area. There's money already on the streets for these programs. There's two state opportunities out there. The county town manager's already mentioned that Senator Commerford has placed ninety thousand dollars in the Senate budget. And although that needs to still go through conference committee and pass the governor's vetoes, et cetera. It's still again a demonstration. And she did that because she was also seeking money for North Hampton at the same time. I also mentioned an additional fourth position, so it was a total of eight. My assumption was a twenty-four, seven. But what we may learn is we don't need twenty-four, seven, and therefore we also don't need eight people. So I want to just say, I think what, I think the staff is looking at this with the right kinds of questions. I appreciate the work that Mary Beth has done in terms of her research. I especially appreciate the work that the Community Safety Working Group has done in terms of their research and their proposals to us. And finally, the last part was as proposed in the May twenty seventh memo or presentation, once Paul put out the memo, which will be in the packet today, it helped clarify for me what our base budget we're at, we're now looking at from. And that base budget is the one that's in Paul's memo. And it literally does not change the schools. It does not change the library. And it shifts forty thousand dollars from police to community services. That's all it does. It doesn't change any dollars. So I'm very supportive of this budget. I'll go back to finance committee and I'll state that. But I am also very supportive of the town staff, working with the knowledge. Community Safety Working Group has also gained and coming up with a program that best fits Amherst. So I just wanted to clarify. And on the finance committee agenda this coming Thursday, the tenth, there is an agenda item where we will actually review all of the financial motions with regard to the budget before they're brought forth to the council on June twenty first, not April twenty first. Thank you, Darcy. So I've learned to clarify that. Are there other questions with regard to the budget or comments to this one? Sarah.
I just wanted to say just that every time Andy brings up the domestic violence, it, it pains me because a great number of police officers, an inordinate amount of them abuse their families. That's a fact. And whether or not that has to do with stress or anything else, I don't know. I don't know who does know. But I think it's probably very offensive to people who have been abused to hear that consistently brought up. So I, I just wanted to say that it's kind of a sensitive subject. And maybe we should use something different. And I agree that there are times when then, you know, human beings use an excessive amount of violence. And, you know, it, it seems that only excessive violence can stop someone. But I, I just wanted to see if we could maybe not use that example again.
Thank you for your comment. Darcy.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to agree with Sarah on her point that it, you know, I agree that it would be hard to vote for a budget that, that is, you know, includes filling the vacant police department positions. That's something that we'd have to turn around and lay people off at a later time. So that I, I have a lot of difficulty with when that would be an easy, it would kind of be an easy direction to go in if we just didn't fill vacant positions. So are we only commenting today about the, the press program? He says.
We're commenting about the entire budget and the review that's been done to date by the finance committee. That's all. We're not doing any votes.
So I did have a couple comments about other parts of the budget.
Please go ahead.
I just wanted to say, you know, I'm really happy that we are creating a a fund for sustainability. I think that's really great. I'm hoping that we are looking forward in the future to increasing it greatly and, and including the parts of the, parts of the budget that we're going to be dedicating to, you know, creating zero energy buildings. That's, that's a big, you know, that's a big thing that our town can take credit for as far as dedicating part of our budget to climate action. But I think that we also should be, you know, you know, we'll be, we'll, we'll be looking at the new climate action plan. But, you know, that I think that we need to be also looking at, you know, either finding a revenue stream or just simply budgeting for climate action in a much more substantial way in the future. Although I'm very happy that we have our hundred thousand dollars in the budget this year. So I also am interested in the form that Sean mentioned that the town is now using to determine. I'm, I'm not clear on that. I'd be, I'd really like to hear about that. And I, it sounds like maybe a climate impact analysis or something that you're doing. And I, so I'm interested in hearing about that and possibly we could, if we could see that, that would be great. Because that is also something I know that, that the new climate plan is going to be proposing. So if you could speak to that, that would be great.
Sean.
Yeah. So we have a online form for when departments submit their capital project requests. And so the thing we added was a question on sort of how does this align with the goals, the sustainability goals of the town? It's definitely something that we could beef up more. So I'm happy to kind of work with Stephanie and you, Darcy, to review that question and what we might want to add to it in the future.
Yeah, one, one issue that I immediately saw was the roof repairs. And, you know, it, to me, it's sort of like, how do you look at the roof repairs with a climate lens?
Yeah. So, so we look at it with a climate lens, but some projects such as roof repairs are, these are sort of immediate. It's not a new roof. They're addressing leaks and, and weak, weak areas in the roof that, to prevent future leaks. So things like that, then the proposers may not have, they may have said there was no, no impact on the sustainability goals of the town from that project in particular. So some projects had an impact and some projects did not. But it's again, something we started this year that we anticipate growing as we do it more and more.
Yeah, that's one of those things sort of like, you know, replacing an HVAC system. You know, if, if something happens in the short term, it seems like an emergency and it, but then it requires you to, to replace the entire roof or fix the entire roof and put that amount of money into it when, you know, it'll lack, it'll last X amount of time. So, you know, that's the kind of thing we need to develop a, a system of figuring out, you know, when are we going to transition? When are we going to decide whether this roof should be equipped with solar? Et cetera. So, you know, we, we have to have a, a system set up because otherwise there's, there's always going to be an emergency. You know, there's always time when, when we feel like we have to make a quick decision.
Yeah. And that dovetails nicely with doing the solar study, which we hope to do this summer and the fall to kind of assess the buildings and their readiness for solar. I'm not sure, I don't think Fort River Wildwood, we would be looking at just given that the school building project. But I'm, I'm not sure where Crocker Farm is at in terms of its structural integrity to support solar, but that's something we'll find out.
Thank you.
And actually, Dorothy, you had your hand up and I wanted to make, give you an opportunity to stop.
I just wanted to say that the whole thing of repairing a roof, when you're thinking about solar, and then you say, oh, but I really should do the whole roof before I put on solar. But your point is we're really only at this point thinking about one school. But I do think you should always, first of all, determine are the roofs suitable for solar? And if they are, then that should be a consideration in how and when you repair or replace a roof.
Yeah. And I'll just, one other thing I'll add quickly is the full roof replacement at Crocker Farm, I believe, is. Yeah, and I'll just, one other thing I'll add quickly is the full roof replacement at Crocker Farm, I believe, is also on the capital plan for a few years out. So that discussion will happen in the not-so-distant future.
Thank you. Shalene?
So one other thing that was there in the Community Safety Working Group's proposal was the youth programs and the youth center and multicultural center for BIPOC. And I know Paul has suggested that once we have a DEI director, that that person is going to be looking into that. And I just want to emphasize how important it is to make sure that we do support our BIPOC youth and also other youth who who may be living under fear, like the connections I'm making in my own head around the impact that living with fear of policing and the fear and all of these different aspects of having access to resources to grow fully in all the different dimensions that are needed or what specific needs BIPOC have, youth have. I think that, to me, is really, really important because that sets a foundation for their entire lives. So I really just want to emphasize how important that is. And I'm just calling this out. I'm not calling to change it at this point because I also do fully believe that to make sure that the investment we put into a youth center will be catering to the youth in our town. And so I am just calling that out so that we make sure we do do a good job of, once we have a DEI or if you don't have a DI, that in fall or whatever the plan was, that we do do some sort of an assessment of engaging the youth in our town. Because I didn't see in the CSWG report what was the feedback from the youth in terms of what they need. There was like a recommendation, but there was no survey or, at least I didn't see that. And so what I would like to see happen next is to understand from the BIPOC youth, what would they like to see happen? What would they use? When would they use it? Where would they use it? What sort of, you know, what, what do they need? And let's work with the youth in our time. Let's make them the leaders of this process and work with them to create a youth center that they will use and flourish in. So that's one thing I wanted to say. And then secondly, in terms of climate, I was also happy to hear that, that's in, in the capital investments, that climate impact is being woven into the decision-making. And something we've been hearing all along from people is in terms of bike paths, pedestrian safety, roads and stuff. So I would love to see that, you know, just coming from Burlington right now. If you haven't seen my Facebook posts, I've been putting a lot about it. It was supposed to be a vacation, but I couldn't help but count the stories and setbacks and read up the zoning and even went and checked the budget. So I think it's a very different town, of course, but it was really good to see the, that they have bike paths everywhere. And their town hall has toilets with stormwater, recycling the water in the toilets, for example. Or, so it just seems like there's a lot we can be doing, which will actually save money and is good for the environment. So I'm excited to see what happens with that. And the last thing is the Economic Director. I know people are saying that, you know, it's not one, no, stop, stop doing this. I haven't finished. I'm not fitting the Diversity Director in lieu of the Economic Director, saying that we need both. And the Economic Director, just because, again, coming back from Burlington and seeing the, the, the different activities and so many different things going on in that town. And I went to the Town Hall and they do have an Economic Director's office over there. I'm like, see, they have an Economic Director. But anyway, my point being that to, we, our staff is pretty stretched out and they're doing an amazing job. And I feel having one more person to look into and working with the Diversity Director to support people of color in setting up businesses and so forth, but to really think about who are we as a brand, as a town? And that is something I learned in the MMA Conference was that to invite the right kind of investments, to invite the right kind of affordable housing developers and all of those things that we're talking about, we have to market ourselves as a town that wants that. We can't be just sitting and saying, oh, they will come and we will let it happen. We have to have a brand that says we are for diversity, we are for climate change, we are the leaders in that, we are the leader in trails and conservation. And so who are we as a town? And all of that is, yeah, okay. So because of that, and there are two different things and they go, and if we don't raise the revenue for our town, our property taxes go up and we're not able to deliver all these services. So those are two different things.
Shalene, thank you. Alyssa?
Thank you so much. I'm just so surprised that more people don't have questions, given that we're going to vote on the budget at our next meeting. So given the responsibilities that we're hearing about for the Diversity Director, especially as regards things like the Cultural Center, the Youth Center, in great involvement in crafts, ongoing training, you know, working with the core equity team and doing all kinds of things that we're, we're doing now, only more so. I don't see how that position can provide Economic Development Director work. It, it can't. I don't see how you can split up a planning person, we already have, to maybe do more Economic Development Director work. Because I know that people are saying we can't afford both positions. But the Diversity Director in the first year yet is not going to be able to do economic development as well. That's just not going to happen. So I don't want us to kid ourselves about how that's going to work. The other thing I'm concerned about, and Lynn, you addressed this through the motion that was explained in the Finance Committee report and that you talked about tonight, is I don't want an answer to this tonight, but I want to know ahead of our next meeting where we're actually going to vote, and so apparently won't be asking very many questions that, that night, is how we as a town council effectively communicate to the town manager that not qualifying for a particular grant or not, you know, getting it because we're competitive, we're not competitive with Northampton or whoever else, isn't a good enough reason not to do it. Because let's be clear, we all have really good intentions. We have amazing staff who are trying to do a million different things, more than they necessarily have time to do. But, you know, let's use a simple example. We were going to rewrite our sign bylaw five years ago. Hasn't happened yet. We've been saying for a decade that we need to reform our zoning bylaws. Hasn't happened yet. Everybody has good intentions. There's a million things people want to do. How are we sure that whatever direction we're providing, if, if we pass this budget, which at this point I'm not planning to vote for, but it sounds like I'm in the minority, if we pass the budget as it is with the direction to come up with enough money to support the numbers of people we think we need to have sooner rather than later, meaning within FY twenty-two rather than FY twenty-three, what's a clear enough direction on that, that we're not going to hear back at the end of January? Oh, well, it's too bad those programs didn't work out the way we expected to grant-wise. We all have good intentions, but it didn't happen. I understand that people in the community are suspicious of us having good intentions that we're not going to follow through on. I understand their frustration that we're not putting money in the budget and then substituting in grant funding if we do get the grants. I understand anti-Aide provisions, et cetera, to a very limited degree. But I'm just not confident that our good intentions are going to be clearly taken care of if things don't work out that we can't control, like other people's funding programs. So I'm just hoping that Paul works clearly enough with the Finance Committee over the next couple of weeks, that when we get this in front of us, he can assure us that what direction we're providing is going to happen, not is going to be, well, we wish it could have happened, but it didn't.
Thank you, Alyssa. Are there any other comments? When we do bring the budget forward, there clearly may be additional questions and comments. I only wanted to make sure we provided some opportunity tonight to get some area comments about that. We're going to take a break and we can be at eight thirty-five. And please, ease and take yourself off video. And when you come back. All right, we're going to begin the next item, which is an update on the Governor's Order and Remote Meetings. Paul, you, would you please start?
Sure. So other councils have worked a lot on this as well, especially Alyssa. And so I'll start and then if Alyssa has things she wants to add, she can do that. As you know, the Governor is lifting the State of Emergency on June fifteenth, which is Tuesday at twelve oh one AM. We just got an advisory memo from our town attorney, which, which I've not really had a chance to read yet, but that's, it's a very useful document. And I'll share it with the council in case you don't get it. What that means is that all the, all the things that Lynn typically reads at the beginning of the meeting are no longer in effect. So that means that we go back to things as they were pre-pandemic, which means that we will be meeting in person, in posted meetings, in town buildings. For the most part, the town has opened up Town Hall and its public buildings pretty successfully. We're still doing some a light footprint of making sure people are wearing masks and things like that. And, and the only exception to that is the Jones Library is on a different trajectory and the Bang Center, we're holding that in abeyance until we complete our vaccine program there during the month of June. There are programs going on there. They're pre-scheduled and people know who, that they're coming in and they get checked in and things like that. But beyond that, come June fifteenth, it is pre-pandemic day. One of the questions for, that the Governor and many have received is what about the way we're meeting today? And what does that mean for us? And there is special legislation that the Governor has filed and there's other legislation that has gone through the, that has been filed through in the Senate and the House to address continuing Zoom meetings? Or are we going to be back in, in person? And I think that's a pretty big issue for the town because how, however, the council rolls, where the rest of the, the other fifty committees in town will, will follow suit. So Alyssa, I know you've done, you've even testified in front of the State House on this, so maybe you should take, take over.
I want to thank Alyssa and Mandy Jo for previous memos and then also Alyssa for preparing testimony and attending a couple of different hearings this past week. Alyssa?
Can I just make a note that Paul said Alyssa should take over? Can we just have that quote go in the newspaper? Truer words. So at any rate, yes, everything Paul said, I have to say that having been the Governor's legislation, right, which I'm sure you all read my thirty-one-page memo, was just having written comment, right, that was, that the Senate was looking at for Ways and Means. And then there was all this other legislation that had been filed months ago saying, you know, this remote stuff's working out pretty cool. Could people keep doing that? And they just happened to have that hearing recently as well. I, I mean, if you ask me to, to take a bet, I'm going to have to say that I got to assume that they're going to pass the Governor's legislation that will keep us going through September first on meetings, just because I don't think there's any reason not for them not to do that. I think in terms of permanent legislation, there's still some arguments people want to have. And there's a difference potentially between state-level commissions, like Commission on Women and Girls versus municipal meetings. So that might take longer to tease out. And that was the subject of, you know, ten different, basically, pieces of legislation this past week. But although I'm not hearing that, you know, suddenly they're acting on the Governor's legislation, I, I just find it strange that they, that the, that the legislators are just going to say, yeah, I know all my communities want to have this through September first, but yeah, we don't care. So we're not going to pass it. So hopes associated with that, certainly Representative Dom and Senator Comerford know that and know that we feel that way. MMA has said that we feel that way through September first. And then after that, it's going to be a different scenario in terms of what other, you know, pressures we can bring to bear. Maybe Paul has a better idea on that because I really don't, because, you know, the time's like really ticking, ticking on the clock here.
Paul, any further comment?
Yeah, so the people I talked to who are at, at the State House level, not our state rep and state senator, but others, feel like there will be something that there will be an agreement between the Senate and the House, but it won't be done until the very last minute. Just per usual, that's normally how this thing works. They think that it will be extended at least till Labor Day, maybe beyond that. But there won't be the permanent changes that everybody's really talking to. I think there's some desire to get the permanent changes now, but that's too big an ask. And I think we've heard all that. So our operating principle at this moment is to prepare for in-person meetings. So, and it's important to recognize that if there is legislation, it allows us to do Zoom meetings. If there is special, it doesn't require us to do Zoom meetings. So if the council and others say, we don't want to be in this world in these little boxes anymore, we want to get back to our in-person meeting, then I would, that would be helpful guidance from the council. Our buildings are open and we can start to accommodate. What I think is really important is there be consistency. We don't want one committee doing it one way or, or one chair choosing one way. Or I think we want to have consistency throughout the town. There might be a phase in, maybe the council leads the way and then other committees. But I think that it's to the public, it's really important. You don't want someone at home lined up to do Zoom and realize, oh, my gosh, I have to, I suppose be a town hall for this meeting. And then that's very frustrating. I think we really want to say, where do we really want to be? And I really don't know where we're prepared to do either. The hybrid meetings are pretty challenging. We can get into the level of detail on that. But for now, I think it's, we're either pre-pandemic meetings or the virtual world.
Let me just also say that in preparation for our meeting on the twenty-first, I will be going to Town Hall and trying to make sure that, to the extent possible, we can integrate external, and working with Athena, integrate external public comment, since that's been one of the features that was mentioned often during the hearings and is seen as a serious advantage of the virtual meetings. But I, like everyone else, I'm waiting to hear what the results are. Dorothy?
One of the things, I, I think that a lot of people in my district would like to have our district meeting in person. So I know that our one coming up is going to be on Zoom. But, I mean, we just had an in-person neighborhood brunch and it was such a wonderful occasion last Sunday. People were so, so happy. And there were conversations and people just didn't even want to go home. It was so great. So I, I'm hoping that whatever is decided, and I do agree that allowing a comment, particularly at night, late at night, to be done on Zoom, even if we're meeting in person, is a great item. But I'd like to know when we can get permission to have our community, district community meetings in person.
Paul, did you have any comment on that?
Yeah, there's nothing that prevents you from doing that now, after Jan, after June fifteenth.
I'm sorry, Paul.
So the only caveat is we may have different, if you're doing it in a town building, we may have slightly different occupancy loads depending on the air circulation and the, and the size of the room. But otherwise, you know, we have a reduced occupancy load now. We have the original one that the building inspector set initially, where you could have like sixty people, I think, in the town room. I want to talk with, will we talk with the Health Director tomorrow morning to talk about, is there, can we go back to where we were? Or is there still an opportunity? And should there be an in-between stage there?
Mandy Jo?
Thank you. I'm just going to state right now that I don't believe any meetings after June fifteenth should be fully remote. I think we need to find a way to make them happen in person. The State of Emergency will have been lifted. There will be no State of Emergency anymore. The science that you have touted for the last year of Follow the Science is that these meetings can be held safely in a room. Safely, even if we require masks, safely. Our students have been doing it now for six weeks, I believe, in the same room, in a building for five hours a day. We can certainly do it for meetings. And if we're going to follow the science, we need to follow the science, no matter how scary that might be coming out of this. And so even if the legislation extending this is signed, I don't support not meeting in person anymore. And I'm just going to put that out there. We have interviews coming up for Finance Committee, for Planning Board, which the Planning Board is Wednesday, so they will be remote. For ZBA, we have other things coming up that would highly benefit from in-person meetings and things coming up that would highly benefit from in person meetings. And as of June 15th, there will be nothing stopping us on the science from doing any of that. And so I think we should go back to in person. I highly support Dorothy and Lynn and us finding a way to accept public comment through phone, through something. But we need to be in person. I think our meetings, all of our meetings have suffered as a group for not being in person, and it's time to go back to that.
Thank you. Alyssa?
One of the things that I testified to, for those who see that, is to continue. And I know Paul says that hybrid is the hardest thing to manage, but I can't see us going back. I that I really appreciated that Mandy Jo tacked that on because my, I was getting really worried when she just said, follow the science. I'm like, yeah, but we also have to follow what we've learned about participation. And what we've learned about participation is we're not going back to people just having meetings in person. And if you can't show up at public comment, then too bad for you. I just can't accept that we're gonna do that. And so just I really appreciate Lynn bringing up that she was gonna be working on that. I know staff has been working on ways to do it. I totally understand that there might be a way that we only do can do it for like part of the meeting so that we don't have to have staff managing that during the whole meeting. But it absolutely is completely unacceptable to me to say, hey, you can't be there in person. It doesn't matter. And only the people who show up in person get to, it's been their wheels for three minutes and you can wait and you should have, you should like doing it that way. That's just not okay. I will also say that I plan to attend via remote participation for the month of June. I do not plan to be meeting in person at town hall. So I don't know if you want to call that a hybrid meeting, but under our pre pandemic rules, unless Paul revokes those suddenly, I'm planning to participate via the pre pandemic rules of remote participation, even if it's not technically a remote meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Alyssa. Pat?
Yeah, I'll try to make this brief. I'm very, very supportive of the idea of hybrid meetings. I think we've had more public participation, which can be rocky at times. But I think that we've had many, many more people involved, and I think that's critical. And I don't see that happening back in the town room. I'm also, I can't believe it, looking forward to being in the town room. So enough said.
Thanks, Pat. Steve?
So I think that this is more than science. So you, those that have spoken before are right that science could have us all back in the town room. I think it's much more about what we've learned about how we can meet. And so there's been great comments here about how many more people have been able to attend our meetings. In fact, perhaps us ourselves have been able to attend more meetings than we would otherwise because of Zoom. So Massachusetts is kind of unique, that most states allow fully remote meetings and have for years. So we're not breaking any new ground here. In fact, Massachusetts is way behind on this issue. And I assume it's a, it's a factor of being a small state. But we moved here from Florida, you know, in the 1800s. And Florida has allowed remote meetings ever since there was a way to participate by a remote meetings for for basically for for most public bodies. So I don't know exactly why Massachusetts has determined that there must be a quorum in the room and has all these ways of, you know, making it difficult to meet remotely when the technology is so good. I, you know, again, I assume it's because of the small state, the assumption is people can travel, blah, blah, blah. But it has actually been eye opening to me to see how much more participation that we we get here. If nothing else, if we're given a stay of execution until Labor Day, I think we should take it. And the reason is that we all has been discussed before, Amherst is a town that clears out to a large degree in June, July, and August because of the colleges and universities. And if we want, we're a year round democracy. So I assume that people are now that people are traveling, they'll be logging into our meetings from distant places. And I think that it would be frustrating for that group to not be able to do that anymore. So I may be speaking in favor of hybrid meetings, but I think I'm speaking in favor of Zoom meetings for the town council, at least through the summer.
Darcy?
You muted.
Darcy, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I I'd agree with Steve on that. And I, I'm in this strange position of my, my daughter is pregnant and unvaccinated. And so I'm being extra careful more than, you know, like everybody else. And so I probably also would have to be remote, even if, you know, we did go back to the town room. So I just, just, just saying, and I am also wondering if there is it, does it violate our confidentiality in some way to ask people if they're vaccinated? Or, or, you know, like ask that only people that are vaccinated be in the town room or something like that? I don't know. But, you know, like, I'd like to know if everybody's vaccinated.
Yeah. So groups have done approached that in different ways. Some people have asked you voluntarily to to say if you're vaccinated or not, and they treat you in different categories. But you wear a mask if you're not vaccinated. There's no way to, we're not gonna have people checking cards to see if they are vaccinated. I think New York actually has a thing you can show them sort of like at university, this says you're vaccinated. University is going to have something that says you get special treatment if you're vaccinated or you get different treatment if you're not. You know, in terms of hybrid meetings, that basically what a hybrid meeting is, and we actually did some at the beginning of the pandemic, Lynn would be in the town room conducting the meeting, if you recall. But they're basically meetings, there's Zoom meetings where people are happy to have their laptops in front of them at town hall. That's the, that's the way we would be doing them. And you could have everybody or nobody, but it would basically be a Zoom meeting and the people would see something like this, except that you would have however many counselors in the in the town room. The issue for that is, and I, and I think Steve, in some ways, Steve's always right, every counselor is always right. The, there are ways that we've learned a lot about just operations, you know, I think Google or Facebook's, you know, came out and said, in 10 years, no one was going to be working together in a, in a building like that's going to be gone. And I remember when, probably 20 years ago, that Bill Gates, when they were building their headquarters, said, we're not bringing one file cabinet into our building. And it's all gonna be electronic. And I thought, never happened. And of course, now you all have tablets that you collect all your information on, and we don't give you a piece of paper ever. And our whole system has switched that way. You know, we're talking internally about what does it mean for our employees in terms, we've learned a lot about how people can work successfully when they're remote. So it's really a question of what does the council want? I think we always have said we will lead with the council. We can provide the support to the council to have hybrid meetings. We can't do that for every committee. We just don't have the, the personnel and not every committee has been given government or town issued laptops like the counselors have. And not all of our rooms are outfitted to be able to do that. So we have limited, we have one room that's really, we're set to go for the town room, anybody can meet in there. But if you have competing meetings, say Conservation and Planning Board on the same night, one gets it, one doesn't. So but so there might be a priority on who, who gets access to the hybrid technology.
Kathy?
Not sure whether you're trying to get a comment or a thought from each person, but I'll just quickly say, I think I agree with Steve on staying remote until the beginning of September for the council. And then I have a question of things like, I'll use the elementary school building committee meeting as an example, where we are going to have a contractor working with us and asking them to always physically come to a meeting might make it more difficult if we can do it. So can can committees choose hybrid? And then would we have to buy for the town meeting room, you know, and would you set up a who gets it? You know, if there, and even if we didn't, and if a committee didn't always need the town meeting room, it was like, sometimes it needed it to make it possible for everyone to participate. And just so people know that this committee has been meeting at 7:30 in the morning. And I think it's been easier to meet at 7:30 in the morning because people didn't have to get up, get dressed and go somewhere. So they, we were doing it before the school day started so that the principals could get to their others. So I'm just thinking that Zoom facilitated a time of day that then particularly worked well for people who were on the committee as an example.
Thanks, Kathy. Shalini?
Yeah, I also support the idea of the hybrid, especially with making it more, if it's making it more accessible to public. And then also, I wanted to speak to the flexibility that I might be needing because my parents are aging and they're gonna be in India. And I have to move them from the Middle East to India at some point when India is safe enough to travel. And so I, that that's something I will need in order to be able to participate in town council. Just wanted to put it out there. And actually, I will need to know if that's possible, because that would determine whether I run or not. Again, thank you.
I need some clarification on what you mean that we'll be in sitting in the town room, but zooming on our computers, because I have to tell you that I agree with all the things people have said about special instances where the Zoom is a great asset. But when it comes to meetings, I really don't want to be looking at the screen. It is killing my eyes. And last year, teaching on Zoom and going to meetings on Zoom was very, very, very hard. So if we're in town, the town room, I hope that I can just sit there and look out at space and look and not have to be looking into my little faces all that time. Is, is that what you meant, Paul? Because I'm kind of confused.
So with IT support, we can project on the screens what you're seeing on your, on your screen here. And so you can, you don't have to look at your laptop. You can look at the screen. We would have a camera on the public comment desk or whoever speaking. So that would be another screen in essence, someone being allowed into the room in essence. And we may have a screen of a shot of just the audience in general. There's some different ways of doing it. It does take, if we're going to manage it like, like Amherst Media does, where they change shots, that's another person that needs to do that. If we're just gonna have static boxes. So the, but in order for you to be seen, we don't have cameras set up on every seat. So in order for you to be seeing, your laptop is going to be projecting you. And so that's, and the one thing I'd like to add is this is, I think that Alyssa and Andy can remind me, remind, remind me of this. When we talked about remote participation, when it first came up several years ago, there's a very strong belief that the town should approach this as a town. Not every individual committee gets to make its decision. So I think that listening to the council, I mean, you're the one, you're the most prominent board and how you want to take this on and whether it's phased in, whether it's however you want to do it, we're, we're welcome to do that. But I think it's important for us to say, it can't be to the whim of an individual chair who says, I'm not going to allow it, or I am going to allow it. It can't be the whim of this committee does it this way one week and then that way another week. And it can't be to the whim of, you know, this, I just think clarity for the public is really important and we need to be, have an overview of this.
Thank you. Chris, I assume you have your hand up for the next meeting.
I wanted to comment on the public meeting process, but if you would prefer not to take a comment, I can just send you an email tomorrow.
That would probably be the best. Thank you. Are there any other counselor comments? All right, then we are going to go on to the next item on our agenda. And let me just mention, while there were two zoning items on the agenda, one is the proposed amendment to zoning by law, section 5.00011. We are doing that one tonight. But the next one, the proposed changes to zoning by law, section 3.3241, and Article 12 converted dwellings have been removed. The planning staff is now working with Steve Schreiber to refine that proposal. So we are going to go next to the proposed amendment to the zoning by law, section 5.011, accessory dwelling units. And Chris and planner Ben Bruegger are, Bruegger are here to talk with us about that. Ready to go?
I just have a few words of introduction, if that is suitable. That's suitable at this time?
Please.
So, good evening. My name is Christine Brestrop and I'm the director. Town council has asked the town manager with the assistance of the planning department and the building commissioner to revise the portion of the zoning by law dealing with supplemental dwelling units. One of the first things we recommend is to change the name to accessory dwelling units. Planner Ben Bruegger will walk you through a quick introduction to accessory dwelling units and tell you about the proposed zoning amendment. We ask that you refer this proposed amendment to the planning board and the CRC for a public hearing. And now with your permission, Ben will make his presentation.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Great. And was Athena planning on putting up? Oh, great. Okay.
There she is.
Awesome. Right on cue. Thank you, Athena. And yeah, thank you, everyone, for taking the time to hear this proposal. I think we've been developing it for a few months now and have met with the CRC and the planning board numerous times and feel like we're finally got it to a point where we're ready to bring it to the town council and look at it, you know, look at adopting this by law. So yeah, you can advance to the next slide. Just a brief overview of what we're talking about. So we're focusing, this by law is focused on accessory dwelling units, commonly called ADUs. So ADUs are small dwelling units or apartments that exist on the same property as a single family residence. So in Amherst, our by law stipulates that a accessory dwelling unit can be built in conjunction with a single family home that is owner occupied, either the accessory dwelling unit or the single family home. ADUs are independent living spaces with complete with a kitchen, bath, and a sleeping area. There's kind of numerous ways they can relate to the single family home. They can be attached, detached, you know, above, below, a garage, like conversion or above the garage. There's numerous different ways these additional accessory dwelling units can can come about. You might have kind of heard them as different names, carriage house, back house, backyard bungalow, in law suites, alley houses. But there's, you know, that it's, it's this idea of adding a secondary apartment to a single family home. And there's numerous benefits to doing this. First, it can generate rental income for a homeowner to rent out the accessory apartment. It provides an opportunity for someone to downsize, but also kind of stay on their same property that they've lived for many years. So you can build an accessory dwelling unit and then move to the ADU and rent out your larger home. It allows, you know, family, multi generational families to live together on the same piece of land. And, you know, it certainly also has environmental benefits, you know, and attached or fully contained dwelling unit is going to be easier to heat and cool because it shares walls with the primary home. So, you know, there's numerous benefits for, you know, affordable, keeping housing affordable, generating income, environmental benefits, and kind of allowing for flexibility in multi generational families living together. So you can go to the next slide. Yeah, just to briefly touch on how ADUs have worked in Amherst. I think the by law was first adopted in 1968, but it was fairly limited. In 2018, there was a proposal, so I'm fast forwarding quite a bit, 2018. I should have, I should have noted to, this is a condensed version of the slideshow that's in the packet. I think there's 31 slides in the packet, but I've, for everyone's sake, I've cut that down to, I think, 10. Hopefully this will go quick. So I walked through the, the history more in depth in that other slideshow. But in 2018, there was a proposal put forth, I think from the planning department, with with basically to increase the size of detached accessory dwelling units to a thousand square feet or eleven hundred for ADA accessible units. This proposal received unanimous support from the planning board. You know, two bullet points here. It creates, creates a wider variety of living arrangements such as two or three bedroom units, which would benefit young families looking for rental units in neighborhood settings. And again, it allows owners to downsize into the ADU. This amendment received a majority of town meeting support, but not quite the two thirds required to pass. So what we're bringing forth today in twenty twenty-one kind of builds on that twenty eighteen proposal and adds some other, you know, changes to the bylaw, which I'll go over now. If you can go to the next slide. So just briefly too, I should mention, you know, ADUs are mentioned in numerous plans that have been developed, the master plan references. A need to make it easier to create attached or detached accessory apartments in all zoning districts. The housing production plan recommends making accessory dwelling units allowed by right, you know, adding design guidelines and reducing parking requirements. And the market, housing market study from twenty fifteen allow, recommends allowing supplemental apartments by right in all residential zoning districts. So you can go to the next slide. I'm, I'm just going to move through these quickly. I just wanted to give everyone a sense of what we're talking about. And these are real actually built accessory dwelling units that have come about in the past mostly five to 10 years. So this is on Best, Bestin Street, the four hundred and twenty-two square foot studio. Kind of to, at the end of the driveway there, that's what, kind of what we're talking about here. You can go to the next slide. Twenty eighteen, this is a nine hundred square foot, three bedroom accessory dwelling unit on Logtown Road. You can go to the next slide. And then, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, these, you can have an accessory dwelling unit that's completely hidden. You wouldn't even know this is actually a multifamily home. I think there's, there's a five hundred and sixty square foot, one bedroom ADU in the basement of this house. And, you know, it, it's a way to add density to single family home neighborhoods without really kind of changing the character and the feel of the neighborhood. Next slide. And then, yeah, I found out, looking through the records, that the Gris Mill on Mill Lane actually has an accessory dwelling unit in there as well. So you can kind of retrofit historic and, you know, landmark buildings in town to, to add accessory dwelling units and, you know, give people opportunities to rent, generate rental income. Next slide. Yeah. And now I'll just go over the bylaw proposal that we're bringing forth today. So again, the purpose, ADUs are an important tool to meet the dynamic housing needs of Amherst residents. The bylaw update today proposes to increase the maximum square footage for ADUs, create a more streamlined permitting pathway and add additional design guidelines. And it does this by increasing the maximum square footage to one thousand square feet. This provides an opportunity for ADUs with more than one bedroom. Streamlining the permitting pathway reduces the barriers to development and reduces costs. We're adding design guidelines to ensure ADUs are compatible with the scale and character of the primary structure and the surrounding neighborhood. And lastly, just kind of simplifying the bylaw structure and making it easier to work with and interpret both for the building commissioner and the boards and committees who work with it. So next slide. Yeah. So just some specific changes. We're changing, you know, from supplemental to accessory, just the terminology. This is more consistent with federal, state and industry terminology. I don't really see the word supplemental dwelling unit used too often. It's usually referred to accessory dwelling unit. We're increasing the maximum square footage for all three types. That would be detached, attached and contained to one thousand square feet and eliminating, eliminating any minimum square footage. We're proposing for attached and contained accessory dwelling units to be allowed by right as long as they meet the general requirements. Detached accessory dwelling units would be allowed right by right if they are less than fifty percent of the primary structure habitable, habitable space. So if they're approaching the size of the primary structure in scale, then they would require and a special permit from the ZBA, just as it is now. But if they're clearly secondary structures and smaller, then they would be allowed by right along with the attached and contained accessory dwelling units. And then again, just adding some design guidelines to encourage compatible architecture, you know, with some flexibility. We don't want to sign the innovation and new modern buildings, but just want to make sure it's, you know, works with the neighborhood and character. You can go to the next slide. And here is just kind of a table which kind of shows the changes, the existing bylaws kind of in the gray and the new, the new bylaws in the bolded text. So just, you know, on the left side, you can see we're just changing the name contained ADU, attached ADU and detached. We're moving them all to one thousand square foot maximums. And then the permitting, they're all going to be by right with requirements except for the detached ADU where it would be a special permit if it's more than fifty percent of the primary structure. So you can go to the next slide. Here's just some resources you can click on if you want to learn more about accessory dwelling units. And last slide is next. Just want to thank you for this opportunity and certainly welcome any questions or feedback about how to move forward with this. So thank you.
And thank you. And thank you for the very nice condensed presentation. I should have mentioned before, this is one of these items that has been, been worked on as part of a response to our desire for zoning changes. And all we're doing tonight is asking questions and then we're doing a referral to the planning board and to the community resources committee so that they hold hearings about it before it comes back to the council for a vote. Dorothy?
Questions. I've watched this presentation and I really like a lot of it. But thinking back to a previous house where our houses were kind of close to each other, when our neighbor wanted to have one of those large exterior air conditioners, they were required to get our permission because there was a rule, this is not in Amherst, but that there had to be ten feet from your, your property to the, from your property to your building.
Dorothy, you're going in and out of the sound.
Okay. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So the question has to do with allowances on either property so that you don't have cheek by jowl. This is particularly for the detached. And what kind of guidelines are there in terms of the edges, how many feet from the property can you build your accessory or expanded dwelling? And do you, what kind of notice or do you have to give to your butter on this one?
Ben, would you like to take that?
Yeah, certainly. So the construction of a new accessory dwelling unit, they would, you know, you would still have to follow the setback requirements in any residential zoning district. I don't know them offhand, but somewhere around, you know, ten to twenty feet, depending on the district, setback from the, from the property line. And yeah, I think that would make it so that they're not kind of right up against each other. And also where there's language in there, I kind of lumped it in with the idea of there being design guidelines. There's language in there now to encourage the development of detached units in the back of properties behind the primary structure as opposed to being kind of right up front on the, on the street.
The other question regarding a butters and how you notice a butters.
And also about parking, if you have parking back there, how close can that neighbor's property?
Chris, do you want to respond to any of that?
So the butters would get notified in the case where there's a special permit requirement. That's always part of the special permit requirement. So that would be in the case of a detached dwelling unit that's more than fifty percent of the gross floor area of the existing dwelling unit. Otherwise, there wouldn't be an, a butters notification. But as the building commissioner has pointed out, when someone adds to their house, if they add a great room or a wing to have a, you know, a new bedroom or something like that, they're not required to have a butter notification. So we're trying to make this easier for people to do this. And the fact that there will be an owner occupant, I think, is an important mitigating factor. So, so the answer is butters would be notified if there's a special permit requirement, but not otherwise.
Thank you. Dorothy, did we get all your questions? Parking was the other one.
That's one thing that's kind of been going around in, in our heads is if the, if there's parking in the backyard to a detached dwelling, how does, might that impact the surrounding properties?
The parking is allowed where normal parking is allowed. So if parking is allowed in a certain location for the primary dwelling, parking for the secondary dwelling would be allowed there as well.
Okay. Alyssa?
Thanks for your patience having a little trouble with my buttons. So one of the things that came up about accessory dwelling units, as, as Chris knows, and I'm sure Ben has heard and many of you have heard, is associated with previous representative town meeting discussions, I was actually too angry to look up the exact offensive statement that I have remembered in part that took place then, but it was to the effect of, well, who would want to live in that square footage of unit? What kind of person would want to live there? And unfortunately, that was, that actually spoke to some people and that was really frustrating. So poor attitude aside, how do we assure neighbors what owner occupied actually means? Because we know that parents can in fact purchase a house for their student, put it in their student's name, and therefore both units would be full of college students, college students who I am not against, but I know that some neighbors feel like, they feel like they're overrun by college students. We all know the really good intentions behind this in terms of downsizing, in terms of, you know, personal care associated with elder care, childcare. But how do we assure people that this isn't just another opportunity for an LLC from Long Meadow to come in or another opportunity for a wealthy parent to buy this for their college student and then have a college students in the other unit? And look there, now you have density of college students that you were assured you wouldn't get because we are not to discriminate against our wonderful college students, but we know how much it upsets certain people in certain neighborhoods.
Chris or Ben?
We do have rental registration, which provides us with information about who is, you know, owning a property, who's managing a property. And the building commissioner feels pretty confident that he can enforce the law to deal with situations such as you're talking about. It is true that you could have parents who turn the ownership of the house over to their children and therefore the house would be owner occupied. That's not generally speaking, the scenario that we're faced with. Generally speaking, the parents continue to own the house and let the children live there, in which case the house wouldn't be owner occupied. So I suppose that you're, you're talking about a, an instance that we haven't really encountered very many times before. I would have to ask the building commissioner what he would do about that.
Darcy?
Yeah, I am interested in a couple of different issues. One is, you know, when I look at it from the perspective of, you know, like my neighborhood, the, you know, the basic ranch style house that, you know, the main, the, the living area in the, in the basic ranch tile house is nine hundred and sixty square feet on the main floor, the living area. And so when, I'm just wondering how, whether, you know, it doesn't necessarily feel fair to me that if you have a much larger house, you can by right have this, you know, ADU, but people in my neighborhood cannot by right anyway. So did, I'm just wondering if you thought about that? And, and I mean, I get the, the the requirement about it being proportional, but that sort of doesn't feel that fair for people that have smaller houses. So that's one thing. The other thing is that I guess I, I, you know, coming from that perspective, I'm not completely sure why we need to increase it from eight hundred to, to a thousand. Particularly if we're not also requiring that it be, you know, like zero energy or that there's be some construction standards for the additional size. So yeah, those, those two issues kind of are, you know, questions for me.
Chris?
So the reason to increase from eight hundred to a thousand is that when a few years ago, when we were first confronted with this, people were talking about moving elderly relatives or, you know, a couple would try to move their mother and father-in-law into a unit that would be adjacent to their unit. And they thought about whether eight hundred square feet would be large enough for the two elderly people. And they realized that it wouldn't really provide them with enough space to really live comfortably and that an extra two hundred square feet would really make the unit much more attractive. And so some people decided against building accessory dwelling units as a result of the limitation of eight hundred square feet. And so it was actually a member of the planning board, Michael Burt Whistle, who proposed that we increase the size of the basic unit to a thousand square feet. And at that time, he also proposed increasing the size of an accessible, fully accessible dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit to eleven hundred square feet. So we've pared that back a bit, but we're kind of going with his premise of a thousand square feet provides enough room for someone to live comfortably. The unit that Ben showed on Logtown Road, I think, is actually about, about nine hundred square feet and it does have three bedrooms, but the living space isn't very large. So that's the answer to the eight hundred to a thousand. In terms of basic living area being nine hundred square feet, I think that we're talking about an ADU, Ben could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're talking about the total footprint of the building as opposed to the living space. And Ben may be able to answer that detail better than I can. So an accessory dwelling unit of a thousand square feet would be roughly equivalent to one of the ranch houses in Orchard Valley at nine hundred and sixty. If you chose to add a contained dwelling unit, which you wouldn't be able to do, but if you wanted to add a an attached dwelling unit, you could add an attached dwelling unit up to a thousand square feet to a nine hundred and sixty square foot house. But if you wanted to build one in your yard, it would have to be limited to half or fifty percent of the total square footage of the existing house. And the reason for that is really just to kind of control how the neighborhood looks. It would look kind of strange if you had, you know, accessory dwelling units popping up here and there that were detached and were equal in size to the size of the house without having gone through some kind of a more public process. So that's my answer to that one.
Yeah, I guess I would just respond that, that doesn't seem fair. But, you know, to not, to not have the same right to build the same size place by right. But I, I made my point.
Evan?
Yes, I have a lot of comments on this, but I'll save them for CRC deliberation since I'm on CRC. But the one thing I wanted to say is as we are getting But the one thing I wanted to say is as we are getting to a point now where some of the zoning proposals that have been ruminating in planning board are coming to public hearing, it, I think it's important that we are making sure we know what the required vote quantum is for these. So we know that the housing choice legislation changed the required vote count, quantum for a number of items. I know housing choice covered ADUs. I don't know if this would trigger the simple majority versus the two thirds. But just, I'm hoping that before this gets to CRC deliberation, we have attorney opinion on that and that that just becomes sort of our standard practice every time one of these zoning proposals is coming forward, that we have an attorney opinion on what the required vote is for it.
Thanks, Evan, and clearly appreciate that comment. And it's, I think it's an excellent suggestion. Steve?
I'm also on CRC and I've spoken in favor of this at CRC and I'll speak briefly in favor of this tonight. But this is perhaps one of the most sensible things we can do to make better use of the existing built environment that we have in Amherst. So we, you know, essentially we're, this allows two family houses throughout Amherst, no matter how big your lot is, no matter what your, what zone you live in, with some exceptions. So I hope that we support this. I have a couple of comments to my fellow counselors who have made some really great points. So Counsel Brewer, we used to dream about the nightmare scenarios when I was on the planning board about exactly what you were describing. So low and behold, at a district four meeting, somebody there after the meeting said that they had that nightmare scenario right next to them, where an LLC was owned by a father and a son. And so it was difficult to determine who the owner was, right? Because if it's owned by an LLC, is it the father, the son? So it was actually a very difficult thing to navigate. So I hadn't really seen that, that very often, but it does exist out there. Also, Counsel Dumont, I think that's an excellent question. So we also live in an area with a lot of 1,000 square foot houses. So on one hand, those 1,000 square foot houses could become the accessory units, right? And then you could build a McMansion in front of them and you're all, you're all, I'm kind of joking. But, but I think, conceptually, I think for me that this is a reason that that exists is it's all about the fact that we're using the word accessory. So accessory assumes that there's a primary. In order to have an accessory, you have to have a primary. So the primary use is the bigger house and the accessory one is the smaller house. So you're right that it seems unfair in neighborhoods that already have, you know, where there's compact living. But otherwise, for me, conceptually, it becomes two primary houses on the same site, which is all, which is a whole different can of worms and outside the spirit of accessory dwelling units.
Kathy?
I have a question that will show my ignorance about the way the process works now. When, when the special permit is triggered, so in the instance where it is larger than 50%, how much more time, how difficult is that compared to purely by right and not having to go through that process? So I, I just don't have a sense of, is it just a small hurdle? Or I, I know one of the issues is the neighbors notify abutters so they can talk about it. So that, that's my question.
Want me to answer that?
Yes, Chris, please.
So currently, we estimate a special permit with the zoning board of appeals to take minimum a month and a half. And, but more realistically, probably about three months to get through the whole process. Whereas if this is a, a permit that is issued by, or an approval that is issued by the building commissioner, it's more likely to take somewhere around two or three weeks to really understand and then grant the approval. Depending on how much information the building commissioner has, of course, he's not going to approve a project if he doesn't have the correct amount of information. So the clock would start ticking, I guess, when he receives a full application.
And is most of that the public hearing and the abutter, is that where the extra time comes in?
Yes, and also the fact that you can continue the public hearing. So sometimes the public hearing happens on one night and then the board says, well, we don't have enough information, so we'll continue it to our next meeting, which is, you know, two weeks to a month later. So that can elongate the time period as well.
Thank you.
So I have a comment and a question. I've actually lived in an ADU that was built as a grandmother apartment. It was so teeny, it was probably only 300 square feet, but it had a great view of Boston. And my husband and I were able to buy our home that we presently live in because we have an ADU. We don't use it as an ADU any longer, but we could not have afforded to buy that house back when we bought it, except for the fact that we could rent out basement unit, which is where my son lives. So my question is the following. Can the owner live in the ADU and rent a larger part of the house under this bylaw? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Shalini?
Yeah, I appreciated Darcy's question and concern about the unfriendish of it. And so my question was if the house is indeed with the 1,000, if it's a 1,000 or 960 square feet house and they want to build an ADU that's 1,000, and if it meets the setback requirements and all of that, then basically we're just saying, because it's just more of a technical thing that they're too primary and that's more of a conceptual thing. But what I'm saying is if, like Dorothy was saying, that there's enough space between houses and all of that is being met. And aren't we like actually empowering or giving people an opportunity to increase their rental income and, and live and afford, continue to afford to live in Amherst? So just because now there are two primary units or whatever we want to call it, that's why we're not allowing, or just because the design factor doesn't meet the, so we're putting design and form above more affordable housing and more, you know, ability to earn revenue before that. So. Yeah.
May I answer?
Please, yes.
So we're not saying that people can't build a 1,000 square foot house if they already have a 960 square? They would just have to go through?
Special permit, yeah. No, no, I do get that. But I mean, it's still making smaller unit homes go through that special, longer three-month process, whereas a bigger home can get it in. And that doesn't seem fair. And more money, I'm imagining, also a time, or you need a lawyer then to go and represent you. So all of that just adds up and it should not be the case for a smaller home. So I would really encourage us to think about, rethink that piece. That's a really good question, I think. And it, as long as we're meeting the setback requirements, so people have enough space between homes and in that case, let's rethink that part.
Kathy, did you have your hand up for a question or did you just not take it down?
Forgot to take it down, sorry.
Thanks. Are there any other questions? All right, so I'm going to move to a motion and that is to refer the proposed amendments to zoning bylaw, section 5.011, accessory dwelling units to the planning board and the community resources for hearing held no later than August 11, 2021, and for a written recommendation and an explanation as to whether the proposed bylaw is not inconsistent with the master plan from the planning board to the town council and to the community resources center no, community resources committee no later than 21 days after the public planning board hearing and for the community resources committee to send a written recommendation to the town council and to submit all materials to the governance organization and legislation committee for a review of clarity, consistency and actionability within 60 days of the hearing held by the community resources committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Darcy?
Yeah, I just have a question. So can the planning board do more than what you just said? Can they, can they suggest amendments and, you know, come back to us with recommendations saying, yes, we like this, but we'd like these amendments?
I believe that's true. Chris?
Yes, that's one of the purposes of the public hearing, is to hear from the public about what would make this better. And if people feel that that would make it better, then the planning board will make that recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion's been made and seconded. We're going to move to a vote and I'm going to start with Dorothy Pam. Aye. Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
I believe Andy Steinberg has, is now absent. Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalini Baumil?
Yes.
Melissa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Jamar?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer's aye. Andy Johannicky?
Aye.
The motion passes 12 in favor, 0, 0 and 1 absent. We are going to go on to two public way presentations. And let me just preface this as we get ready. Guilford Mooreing is here for those. In both instances, we have the option of either referring or passing without referral. If we refer, they would go to TSO and they would come back to the council after that. However, in preparation for the possibility of approval, I'm going to request that we suspend, we move to suspend Town Council Rules of Procedure 8.4 for agenda items 8C, 1 and 2. Is there a second?
Didn't we already do that under consent?
Yes, we did.
You know, I thought we did. Thank you. And then sitting here going, okay, thanks. We're done with that. So we're going on to North Pleasant Street and McClellan Street intersection crosswalks. Guilford?
Good evening. So I know you have the two packages in your, two, two information packages in your package. So basically, I'll just catch on it really quickly. The first one is changes in North Pleasant Street and McClellan Street intersection. This came about as we were working on the project for Kendrick Park and doing the playground. We realized there was no good way to get from the west side of the park into the neighborhoods. So we looked at the intersection of McClellan Street there and we basically chose to raise the intersection up to slow traffic down, put in two crosswalks, because there's no crosswalks there now, and then tie those crosswalks and the sidewalk into the new sidewalk that cuts across the, the park right now and ties into the playground and the other side, the east side of Kendrick Park. I included in the packet, as I showed you, the detailed blow up in the intersection. And then there's also kind of, the Cecil Group's plan for the Kendrick Park is laid out on top of an aerial. So you can see what the Cecil Group proposed and how we're adding in the pieces and how we're trying to tie it all together. So if there's any questions on that one, I'll just stop and take questions.
Are there questions? Kathy?
Yes, in the memo, Guilford, it said, oh, one of the possibilities is turning that stretch of North Pleasant from McClellan up to Triangle to be one way. Does the arrow in this diagram tell me? At one part of it, it's going in two directions and the other way it's just going, I guess that's maybe north. Is that how I would interpret this?
Yes, one of the things the Cecil Group talked about was making the section of North Pleasant from McClellan to Triangle one way and it would be one way north. If you did that, you could either, they did it to add parking next to the park. So you could park and go to the park, park your car and then go to the park. We actually also looked at it as a way also to, if you didn't want to add this, add the side, the parking in, we could add the sidewalk on the pavement, the existing pavement, and that would save trees instead of having to cut trees down on the west side of the park to put a sidewalk on the west side of the park. And then technically, there's enough room that if you take out the green space on the west side of North Pleasant Street, you can have parking and a sidewalk in the existing layout of the roadway and make it all one way going to the north. This is something to think in the future. It's not something we're proposing now. So this was just something that, showing how we're thinking long-term in the area here.
So we're, we're only talking about the intersection right now, not a decision on that green space or the one-way, way pieces of it?
Not, not necessarily. I mean, yes, we're only talking about that intersection. But if you want to expand it, you can, but I figured you want to talk more about it. This is just sort of a preview of what could come next.
Thank you.
Mandy Jo?
I think this is basic enough that I don't need to have a referral. I think we could just vote on it tonight.
Thank you. So do I. Are there any other questions?
I do.
Yes. Dorothy?
Well, I, I wanted the picture.
Can you put the picture back up, Athena, please?
I still need, we're talking about the picture, particularly if this is it. So the intersection is in the box and what did you change to do that? Just go over to?
Athena, can you go, Athena, can you go to the next picture?
Okay, that's?
This is a blow up of what we're changing. So the light gray area is the pavement and it's being raised up to give a raised intersection. So as you drive down North Pleasant Street, you have a bit of traffic calming. We're putting two crosswalks across North Pleasant Street to tie the McClellan Street side into the park. And then we're upgrading all the ADA crosswalks and tying into the sidewalk which goes across the park.
Okay, so that, that looks good. And you're, you're, when you say you're not cutting down trees on the east side of the street in order, and you said you, does that mean you're putting the sidewalk in the area where the road was or the curb was? I didn't quite catch that because you said you were doing something, so you have to cut down trees on that side.
No, ma'am, that's a, for the work we're looking at right now, there is no impact to any trees. For the work we were talking about earlier, in the future, if you wanted to, we could talk about moving things around and not putting the sidewalk on the west side of the park in North Pleasant Street instead of putting it on the park side. That would not, not impact the trees. That would be a future discussion.
That's, that, that sound, looks good to me. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So Kathy?
Yeah, I just had one other question. I had sent it to Paul in advance. Is there already a budget for this? You already have this in your work plan? I know we're being asked about the public way. I just was wondering about the cost.
We're going to have a little money left over from the playground to do the sidewalks on the playground, on the park side. And then we're just taking sidewalk repair money and, and road repair money and doing the little intersection work. It's not that much money in the overall, but it'll make a, it'll tie the project into the neighborhood much better and it won't leave it kind of like as no one thought about it and it's not a complete project.
Thank you.
Dorothy, did you just forget to take your hand down? Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, then I'm going to make a motion. I want to be very clear that the motion does not include the street directionals in terms of one way or two way. Okay? To approve the conceptual plan titled North Pleasant Street and McClellan Street Intersection Improvement Project dated May 3, 2021, showing improvements to the North Pleasant Street and McClellan Street intersection to include raising the intersection and installing two new crosswalks. and Installing Two New Crosswalks on a North Pleasant Street at the intersection." Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any further discussion? Darcy?
Yeah, I just want to know whether our vote on this would clinch the decision to make it one way because of some, no? Okay, because I guess I just have received some comments about the changing it to one way that I would want to, you know, have the subject of discussion if that were the case.
My understanding is that this design does not conclude or demand that it be one way. Okay? The motion's been made and seconded. There's a further discussion. All right, then I'm going to start with Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalene Bonnem.
Yes.
Melissa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Jomont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer's aye. Mandy Johannicky.
Aye.
Great. The vote is 12 in favor, no opposed, no extensions, and 1 absent. We're going to go on to the South Pleasant Street, West Street, Mill Lane intersection improvements and Mill Lane Multi-Use Path.
So.
Let's have the drawings while you do this, okay?
There's a bunch. Guilford, let me know which one you'd like.
All right, this is the one to start with, please. Thanks. So what this project here is, is it's a continuation and a tying in of two separate projects. We've been working for the last three years on upgrading the multi-lane path on East Hadley Road. We have the path that goes all the way basically from the town line with Hadley all the way to West Street or South Pleasant Street at this time. The next project we're looking at is to tie in the sidewalk, which is in some various states of disrepair, tie the sidewalk that goes from South Pleasant to Groff Park. And Groff Park, as everybody knows, I hope everybody's using, we just did some upgrades to the playground and the spray park last year. And so we're trying to put in the whole project together to tie the playground into the neighborhoods to the, to the west of South Pleasant Street. And we've already done some work. It's kind of a theme we have going here is tie people to playgrounds and get people to playgrounds so you can get out and do things. So the work we're proposing right now for you to approve is just in this one page here. It's in the dashed outline. That's the work we're proposing. It'll be to upgrade the crosswalk at South Pleasant Street to pave the walkway which goes across the pedestrian bridge and the pedestrian path from South Pleasant Street, sorry, South Pleasant Street to Mill Lane. And then to upgrade the sidewalk from Mill Lane to Groff Park and make it wider and you, and make really a multi-use path. What we show in the next two, next drawings, and I'll, I'll talk about it as we get to them, is we also tied in, because we've had concerns as we talked about the neighborhoods, we've had concern about the intersection with Mill Lane and West Street. So we conceptualize some changes here as well, which is closing up the intersection a little bit from Mill Lane, putting some more, putting the crosswalk in that goes across West Street and putting in some added lights there, redoing the bus stops on West Street and then redoing the sidewalk on West Street so that the sidewalk does not go through, off to the east through the woods, that the sidewalk is next to the roadway and better serves the bus stops and then also better connects to the new multi-use path. This was just showing people that we are thinking about how to connect it to the next phase and how to connect it to the overall system in the pedestrian system and transportation system. Because the question will come up as we start moving along is, have you thought about what to do with the rest? And we have. There's some splitter islands we've proposed putting in. One splitter island will be put in when we do the crosswalk improvement across South Pleasant Street. There'll be a second splitter island across from the bus stops at the crosswalk we put in at a future point on, on West Street. So the next, next drawing. So the next, the next drawing shows the work on West Street more. And the next drawing, please? And then this drawing shows you actually the multi-use path which will go along Mill Lane and tie into the entrance to, into Groff Park. We do do make some changes to the entrance to Groff Park as well. And there was, is, there is a proposal to put a little viewing area for the river along the multi-use path. If that can be done, we're going to do it. If we can't do it, we're going to leave that out. But that's the overall project. If you have any questions, I'm willing to take them.
Questions from the council? Mandy Jo?
Yes, just two. The pedestrian bridge and the sort of, what I would call the cut through from South Pleasant Street to Mill Lane, the, the walk, walk sidewalk, whatever you want to call it, goes through two properties that aren't owned by the town. And so I'm wondering whether we have permanent easements for those, for the use of that pedestrian walkway on those two properties, especially if we're going to be making improvements on all of them. And so that's number one. And the second one is if we've been doing a great job improving this area to connect the East Hadley Road, residences and apartments to Groff Park, but we still have an unpaved road that connects Groff Park to the entire east side of Amherst, including Colonial Village, the Stanley Street neighborhoods, and many neighborhoods on that side. So what is our plan for eventually paving Mill Lane so that people don't have to drive on the most direct route across a moonscape or bike across a moonscape, which I must say is very scary to try and bike that dirt road that is a moonscape most of the year?
So your first question about the, do we have permission across the two properties is, yes, we do. The town of Amherst actually owns the pedestrian bridge and we have a pedestrian easement across the two properties. So that's already taken care of. Second question you had, whenever you're ready, we, we can come up and provide you a plan for Mill Lane when the council's ready to move forward with that.
That's quite an invitation. Are there other questions from the council? Yes, Alyssa?
Yeah, not everybody is ready to pave Mill Lane and I don't just mean on the town council. There are people who've been happy with the fact that that way people don't drive that direction, cut through there. So I think that's going to be a more complicated question. I appreciate Guilford throwing that back to us because that'll be a more complex question when it happens. In terms of, I'm not trying to distract, but since we're trying to get, you know, people walking there and walking up to Groff Park. So when you stop at the light there at East Hadley Road and you look to your right, you see that the bridge railings are horrific. I don't know what's a good adjective for that. So how does that play into this? If we're encouraging more people to walk around in that area and we need to get them to not touch those railings, what's our plan for that? In terms of, I'm sure there's lots of rules about why that hasn't been done yet, but it's obviously dangerous right now.
So the sidewalk actually stays on the west side of the, of the bridge, the road bridge.
Yeah.
And those, those rails are actually in good shape. We do need to paint them and there is a plan to paint them at some point. The goal was to buy new railings for the east side and we're still working on that. It's just something that fell through the cracks during the pandemic. The, there's one person, there's one company that does make the railing so we don't have to change to a new style. We can get the old style railing. There's one company that makes them in the eastern part of the state. They were, they stopped production for a while. It's, it is on the list of things to do. It's about a $50,000 replacement just to replace the rail on the east side. And we're kind of moving forward with that.
Okay. Are there additional council questions? Is there any, yes, Darcy?
I just have one comment and that is, you know, the residents on Mill Lane, a number of them have mentioned to me that they would like to have more traffic calming there because of people coming out of Groff Park and speeding. And so they want speed bumps.
You must mean.
Pardon?
You must mean the residents where the road is actually paved.
Oh, yes, yeah. The residents that, on the map there, on, on the map that we see, yes. So, yeah, we get, we have gotten complaints from those constituents. There's speeding of people coming out of Groff Park.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about the particular plan in this case which does not include doing anything to Mill Lane? Okay, so I'm getting a basic sense from the fact that we don't have a lot of questions that perhaps we would not do a referral? Am I hearing any? Okay, then I'm going to approve, to move the following, to approve the conceptual plan titled "South Pleasant Street, West Street, and Mill Lane Multi-Use Path, dated February 16, 2021, and consisting of three pages showing improvements to the South Pleasant Street, West Street, and Mill Lane intersection and the multi-use path along Mill Lane from West Street to Groff Park." Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to move. Let's start with, I think I'm with Evan Ross. Maybe I'm not. Go ahead, Evan.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalene Bonnem.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Jomont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer's an aye. Mandy Johannicky.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Aye.
The vote is 12, 0, 0, and 1 absent. Thank you. And thank you very much for your patience in joining us tonight. At least we got to the agenda item. Okay?
Yes.
Thanks, Guilford. Yeah. We are obviously now going to go on to committee and liaison reports. We have no appointments tonight. Mandy Jo, any report on CRC?
Um, there's applicant interviews for the, well, interviews for the applicants to the planning board are this Wednesday, beginning at 7:00 PM. They are on Zoom. The posting is on.
Kathy, any update from the elementary school building?
Uh, yeah, we met with, well, we didn't meet with, we were on Zoom with the MSBA Today panel. And since everyone said they loved our OPM and they loved the proposal, we think we will get a positive letter, which means we'll be at the start of the feasibility study. Then she gave a presentation, she meaning Margaret Wood, who is the lead on the team. And Darcy and others will be pleased to hear that MSBA actually said Amherst should be commended on being so forward-thinking with having a zero-energy school building as a goal and having diversity, women and minorities being part of the team and, and construction project. And this team is women-led and has a strong reputation. So in addition to liking the project team, they liked what our town had done to set these as goals. So we will, we'll have a meeting on Wednesday at 7:30 in the morning. And Steve, Margaret's going to be able to join us at about 7:45. So I'm going to send out a note to everyone tomorrow. She'll, she'll do her little preview. And she's got a very, in her, they commented on a very ambitious timeline, aggressive timeline to try to move this project forward. So we'll see whether we can achieve that or not.
Kathy, any comments about the finance committee since Andy's not at the meeting?
People should know that we do have a meeting on, on Thursday at 2:00. And one of the things that was referred was the exemptions. That'll be discussed and we will be revisiting motions and discussion about the budgets on Thursday. So that agenda has been posted. The other thing that we will have during that meeting is the third quarter report. So you can see revenues and expenditures and you get a, I can do guest, guestimates on how we'll end up the year now that we're three quarters of the way through with projected versus actual. So that will be all on the agenda for 2 o'clock.
Thank you. George, GOL?
Yeah, GOL will be conducting the FINCOM interviews on June 16th. And you'll be getting the SOIs and the selection criteria. It'll be posted and I will notify all of you as soon as it's posted on Wednesday. I'll be reaching out to Paul, though maybe he'll, can tell me this evening, but I'm not sure yet how we're going to do the interviews. At the moment, it's going to be remote, but it's the 16th of June. So in theory, I assume they'd have to be in person. Anyway, we will do them one way or the other on 16th for FINCOM. A week later, on June 23rd, we will be of a special meeting of GOL to review the applications for DAB and make our vote and recommendation to the council on the 23rd. And we've always wanted to meet four times in a month. And so this month in June, GOL will meet again on June 30th. Just to, just for the sake of it, we will be doing some other business. But essentially, interviews are coming up and recommendations for FINCOM and DAB.
So can I assume that for the council meeting on June 21st, you'll have a recommendation for FINCOM?
Ah, yes.
And that for the council meeting on June 28th, you'll have a recommendation for the District Dean Advisory Board?
That's correct, yes.
Great. Mandy Jo, I just want to go back. You have your hand raised, but can I ask you a question?
Yeah. My hand was raised to talk about interviews, so.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Oh, no. So to answer what I think your questions are going to be, there should be a recommendation for planning board appointments for the June 21st meeting. And hopefully, there will be a recommendation for ZBA appointments for the June 28th meeting. And that's what I forgot to mention in my report. Please, 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 it is our entire council's responsibility to recruit applicants for the positions we need to appoint, and we need applicants for the ZBA. We are trying to make recommendations for two full positions and four associate positions. That is six open positions. So please continue to recruit. The statement of interest deadline is June 13th at 9:00 PM this coming Sunday. So if we receive a CAF at any point this week, I, within a day or as as soon as I see it generally, and I can get to my computer, I send that person the information for when the deadline for the statement of interest is. So please continue to recruit.
Thank you um for the efforts of that committee and George as well. Any other comments, George?
Just to uh pick up on Mandy for DAB, um, we are still accepting candidates. And that will, we will accept candidates up to June 14th. And just like Mandy, if a CAF comes in, I jump on it right away. We had declared the pool to be sufficient, but we would certainly value having more applicants. So again, uh, if people can push that um with the DAB up to June 14th, we're still taking applications.
Great, thank you. And thanks for all that committee's work too. Uh, Town Services, Darcy?
Yeah, we have a meeting on Thursday. Um, we actually didn't have our last two scheduled meetings. Um, going to have a a number of appointments and reappointments to look at. And we're going to hear from the Department of Environmental Protection Technical Assistance Grant Person about um hauler options. Um, and we thought we were going to have some public way referrals, but I guess we're not.
One less thing, two less things. Mandy Jo, your hand is up still?
Yes, I have a question for TSO, which is the O part of your charge is outreach. Um, what have you been doing with regard to the outreach part of your charge? Or what will you plan on doing in the near future regarding the outreach part of your charge?
Well, we, we have um, we have an uh a plan that we started looking at a while back when we were creating our review process, which we could look at some more. Um, but no, we haven't really done, uh, you know, we haven't done that much. You know, I've had some, I know that um Shawnee is working on an outreach and engagement program in CRC, which she has um discussed with me and with our District Five constituents. So it seems like that's something that we could work on together.
Any further comment, questions? Um, Town Managers Report, Paul?
Thank you. I know you're in your sixth hour of the meeting. So um, the um, you'll, you talked about public way uh uh this tonight. So appreciated you moving those two projects forward. You'll see downtown that they were doing some improvements to the uh walkway that's adjacent to the old Starbucks. I forget the name of the company that's there now. And that's been was something that was initiated initially by members of the council on aging. And you'll see us uh improving uh crosswalks all with grant money uh throughout the downtown area. The chiller at the Fort River School has been on the fritz. It seems to be working as of noon today. Um, but we will be um looking at some options for that. It's a pretty big ticket item, and we will need to make some decisions about whether it's going to be a long-term rental or a purchase of a uh of a unit to um support the air conditioning in that building over the next couple of years. Um, Spray Park has been opened. It opened on the one of the coldest days of the spring. But this weekend, it was open um and very popular. And the superintendent even referenced it when they were closing the schools earlier today. Seems to be very popular as as does Puffers Pond, so we're really glad to have that. And I think that's a, when we get the Kendrick Park Playground going, that's going to be a real, two big additions uh to our community. Um, and then in terms of uh the, the town hall has reopened to the public. Um, and so we've had people coming in, doing meetings and things like that. Um, generally, it's sort of staff are getting a little more acclimated to having people they that don't look like other staff in the building. They're very happy to have the windows open. Everybody's very excited about it, to be starting to interact with people again. So we're taking it relatively slowly, but by next week, we'll be just normal like we have in the past. Uh, and I'll work with the council president, I um, in terms of uh, my sense is that um, you know, we will not know uh about the open meeting law changes at the state level. Uh, the Senate releases its version of what it wants to do on Thursday. You know, they're not going to know until maybe the 15th or 16th. So we will be looking at not at moving to in-person meetings um unless there's some kind of um relief. And I think, you know, I'll work with the council president about what does that look like in terms of being able to have council meetings, hybrid meetings as you as you'd like to, as we try to move in that direction. And what does that mean for all the other committees in town?
Uh, we have questions, Kathy?
Yeah, I'll just, uh, one is, um, I've heard from a couple people, but I haven't seen it myself, that we've got back in angled parking in front of the Judy's area. Um, so I heard two different comments, and I'm wondering whether this is Alyssa's urging that we should have some experiments and see how people do with it. But one was, oh, it's creating chaos. Another was, people seem to like it. And the third was, some people go in forward and some people back in. So it's not completely clear to them what to do. So I just had, it, how are you, you know, is this an experiment? Are you watching it in excess and assessing it? It was a question.
So, yes, so DPW wanted to see, well, what would it look like on the ground? And they, we had this little plot of land, and they sort of just in very thin lines laid out what it might look like. And it was not intended to be utilized as back-end parking, but people like instantaneously started to use it. So um, we're going to probably put down lines on, within the timeframe that I think, I think I can do 14 days of as an experiment and then take it away. Um, but they were just sort of curious to see what would it look like, just like, what would it look like on the ground in that location? And it seemed to be able to fit, but then people do park parallel there as well. And so it's not very clear because we haven't really done the lines yet. Once we do the lines, it will, and they couldn't do the lines earlier uh because of the rain and everything like that when they were setting it up.
Now, it maybe want to go downtown and watch, you know, sit there for an hour and watch what was happening. So and then my other question, you mentioned the North Amherst Library. Um, and um, I get periodic questions on when might this start, when might the plans? And I saw you, you're sort of in the architect doing construction. So just, do you have any rough estimate of of a beginning?
Uh, for the constru-, well, we, we, we still need to do the construction documents, and we need to do the bidding. So we're, we're hoping, again, still hoping to get this started this fall.
This, so it's in this, it's in this fall?
At the fall, yeah.
Mandy Jo?
Yes, thank you. Um, two, well, one question and one sort of just statement. Um, the first one is, I haven't heard anything about July 4th. Um, it hasn't been in any town manager reports. I don't think about whether it's going on or whether it is not. Um, so I would just like you to clarify one way or the other. Um, and then, you know, I've seen that the library is starting to reopen um with a one-to-five hour, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM hours, six days a week, starting next week. Um, and while I'm happy about that, I also just want to state my extreme disappointment that it is following a schedule different from the town buildings. Um, given where the science is and your mantra from day one of following the science. So I, I know we aren't in charge of the library, and you are not in charge of the library itself. But I wanted to express my disappointment that they are being slower than the town is.
So and there will be a Fourth of July, there always is, but there, we will not have any events. Uh, we canceled, we did not schedule, and most communities have canceled the um Independence Day fireworks a long time ago. Um, we had no clue, we, we didn't, when we had to make a decision, a a yes or no decision on that, no one had, you know, again, we were looking at the August deadline. Most communities have postponed their fireworks to the the fall. As a, you know, since we do it at UMass, we're not confident that they would say yes to that. But given that we don't have a recreation, full-time recreation director right now, but that decision was made back in February when we had to say yes or no to the fireworks company.
Uh, George?
Yeah, thanks, and Paul, number of District Two residents are getting very excited about Kendrick Park. Um, but at the moment, it looks like we still don't really have a date. Um, and that's just the way it is at the moment for opening.
Yeah, so it's, it's a really complicated one. It's simple but complicated. We're waiting for Granite to come in from New Hampshire. Uh, we have a June 30th deadline that we're really pushing very hard to because we have a grant requirement to hit the June 30th deadline. There's a lot of um staff, you know, both accounting and um DPW crews are trying to do best we can because we need to get the reimbursement from the state. We need to have the the project substantially completed. Um, we're hounding them to get the granted in so we can complete the project. So um, it's just a matter of getting a delivery of this material.
Okay. Um, Alyssa?
So I assume it'll come to TSO before the town council. But on page six of your town manager report, delegated authority, it talks about short-term event uses of the town common. Use of the East Street Commons for the mobile market. This request will come to the town council when their timing exceeds the number of days permitted to be approved by the town manager. I'm willing to make a, you know, pandemic-related exception, but I think that's a misreading of the town council policy on use of the public way. I never intended, when I passed that policy, that you would get to approve it for X period of time, and then we'd approve it for the next period of time. Because if we do that, like you're doing here on a regular basis, that means you approve it for this use, and then the mobile market has to come back to the town council to do what they've been doing. And if we say no, we're the bad guys. We should have known at the beginning that this was going to be longer than a time period. Now, I totally accept that there could be things, including this, that could have been a pilot program that were only going to be for X period of time. But I can't turn into English words your per, your interpretation of our policy of what we pass for the public way. It's not, you get to approve the first part of it, and we do the last part of it. The use is expected to be for that period of time or shorter. If it's expected to be for that period of time or longer, it belongs to the town council. So again, I would say if we have to do a one-off, but it sets people up for disappointment because they can go through you to get one set of approvals. And then if it extends, then they have to come to the town council. We may have a completely different process. And that doesn't feel fair to the applicants, and it's not what I believed anyone's intent was when we passed that policy.
Um, any comment, Paul, at this point?
I understand that perspective, yeah.
Okay. Uh, any other questions to the town manager? Uh, then we're going to move on to town council comments. I've uh did put a president's report in um, and have no particular comments about that. I do want to give you a few highlights of the June 21st and 28th uh meeting. However, that's in your packet, so I really don't want to take up your time. And I'll be adding to those the um uh different nominations that are appointments that will be coming up. Um, are there any questions or future agenda items? Mandy Jo?
Yes, um, it was my understanding that potentially apartments, mixed use, and there's a related parking modification was coming to the council on June 21st for referral to the planning board and CRC for hearings. And there's a potential for demo delay to show up to the council sometime in June um for referral for hearing and non-hearing, given what the proposal is. So I'd, I'd ask that you pen, pencil those in depending on where the planning department ends up with.
Um, and I've tried to list in the future agenda items, all the things that I think are still out there. Please look at those carefully and add and so forth, even if we don't have dates. I'm just trying to make sure we're tracking. So I will move um the apartment thing up to zoning item up to June 21st and the demo, the demo delay maybe June 28th. We'll see. Okay? Alyssa?
Thank you. I just wondered, since it has a question mark and, you know, other things are coming up, how solid are we on the proposed uh moratorium building bylaw as a first reading on June 21st? I'm hoping solid, but I want to hear if there's a question.
The question remains with CRC, George?
Uh, no, CRC has.
I'm sorry, the question remains with GOL, George.
And um, it's my intention to put that on the June 16th agenda. We do have interviews and we have a vote, but we should have time to take it up on 16th. That's my intention.
So if they take it up on the 16th, it'll be on the 21st.
That is for, you know.
Other questions, comments? Future agenda items, Kathy?
I might have missed it, but um I have a question, when inclusionary zoning would, will come to us as a full council? The hearing happened and Planning Board voted it out. So I just don't know what that, what happens next.
Mandy Jo?
So uh, I want to go back to moratorium for a second. If we're planning on voting on the 28th, that bylaw language needs to be on the bulletin board by the 14th, which is a week before our actual first reading, just to remind people. Um, if we tend, tend to read on the 21st and then vote on the 28th, 14 days before the 28th, it needs posted on the bulletin board.
Okay.
Question.
Yeah.
IZ is still in CRC right now. CRC did not have time at its last meeting to make a recommendation and get to a vote on the recommendation. Planning Board made a recommendation already, but CRC also has to make one before it goes to GOL. CRC, I expect CRC to be able to make that recommendation at tomorrow's meeting, and then I will forward it on to GOL.
Lots of moving pieces. Anything else? Kathy, you still have your hand up? Now your hand's down. Are there any other comments, questions, council comments?
Can we get an IT person to program it that as you start to speak, your fan goes down?
Yes. We've tried. Um, thank you very much. It's been a long evening. Uh, and the meeting is adjourned.